Board of Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, June 12th, 2019. Welcome all of you here today. There's kind of a buzz in the room. I don't know if everybody's excited because summer's almost here or what, but it's, thanks for all of you coming. Our first item is if you'll join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flying of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So our first item this morning is citizen input. If somebody wants to speak on something that's not on the agenda, we've got blue forms over here, but I haven't had any turned in. So I, unless somebody wants to come up, you can fill out your blue form later if you were planning to speak and didn't know about the form. There's nothing there. We'll move on to consent agenda. So I'd like to pull items two, five, and six to have brief discussions on those. And I do have changes for nine and 10, so.
And also item number four for economic development loan conversion, we have some here.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we'd asked when we were scheduling it whether they wanted, yeah, that'd be great. So we'll pull number four so we can talk about that a little bit. Thank you. So that would mean pulling two, four, five, six, nine, and 11. Anything else? Any of you?
Nope.
Okay.
So you're saying minutes nine and 11 item?
Yes.
Okay.
So seek a motion supporting the remainder of the consent agenda.
I approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Second.
Further discussion? Okay, Commissioner DeR, Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. So what that does to us is that moves those items that were pulled from the consent agenda to the action items in the order that they came up or pulled. So item number two was consideration of board, order number 2019, page 24, appointing Tom Anderson as Deschutes County Treasurer. Looks like Dave's doing this. So my question was, it's not clear to me how long, I understand the technical problem that our finance director can't, our recently appointed finance director can't be the treasurer at this time, but when can he be the treasurer?
Commissioners, the eligibility requirements to run for treasurer are one year from the general election at which he would file to run. The next general election is November of 2020. He is, there's a one-year residency requirement in order to be the county treasurer. Six years ago, when Wayne Lowery became our finance director, the board took the same action in appointing me as county treasurer until Mr. Lowery met the requirements to be the county treasurer. So Greg Munn, our new chief financial officer, the requirement of his appointment was that he meet the eligibility requirements to run for treasurer in November of 2020. So that would mean he would have to be a resident of the county by November of 19. He is making arrangements to move from Crook County to Deschutes County. So sometime between now and November, I'm not sure of his actual timing on when he would undertake that move, but once he has moved here and established residency, then one year from that time, he would meet the requirements. If the board so chose, they could appoint him as county treasurer, you know, after he's met that one-year requirement, or sometime between now and November 19, which would be some in 2020, prior to the '20 election, or you could leave me appointed as treasurer until he runs in the election. And if he wins that election, then he would formally take office the first week in January of '21. So I'll look to Dave in case I missed anything in that description, but that, those are the, that's the background and that, those are the options available to the commissioners.
Captured it well.
So, so I didn't know this was coming up today, but I, I'd understood when we met with Wayne, who was elected treasurer last November, that he was going to continue in that role for a period of time. I hadn't heard a discussion that it was going to be appointed, but you're talking about being the treasurer really for a year and a half almost at the, if he doesn't move here till November. I, I see a treasurer role as something different than administrative, so I, I guess I feel like we should discuss that. And I'm not sure, you know, we've got an investment committee that does that. I mean, the treasurer has a real role in terms of the stocks and bonds, et cetera. So I, I guess I was caught, this was a surprise to me that this was being done. I wasn't aware of it. And if it's that long of a period, it seems like we're, because it's an elected position, it would be something, there should be a formula for us to appoint somebody. But I don't know that that's the right thing to do. I'm just saying, I, it wasn't a consent item to me because I hadn't even briefed, but I don't know.
Commissioners, I let, I left out some of the practical format of what we're doing here. The original plan was for Wayne to remain the elected treasurer into the future, beyond his retirement date at the end of that month. What we've learned since we kind of decided on that plan of action is that he cannot do that and still collect his purse retirement from finance director. So what we intend to do is, through this appointment, is for me to delegate the function to Greg Munn and for Wayne to come back as a senior advisor to the finance department. So in fact, he will continue to perform the functions of county investments and treasury, working with Greg, at the same time provide instruction and coaching to Greg Munn. So when Greg Munn is ready, then he would be able to, you know, assume the, the practical duties of the treasury function again, you know, through delegation from me as the appointed treasurer to him.
So how does the delegation take place? Is that by ordinance or order also?
No, that's an operational decision that I would do, much as I did five, six years ago. So I would delegate that work to the chief financial officer and by extension Wayne as the advisor to the finance department.
Any questions?
Mr. Cherry, I do support this. You know, we're going to have the resources and the history in the organization by having Wayne available and Greg Munn being the chief financial person at the county. The treasury position is basically those two, first two pages of our monthly financial report. So that's, you know, as we know, that's what we're talking about here. And then the rest of the system, the department budgets and the status as the year goes on is really the, you know, finance person's work product.
Questions or comments?
No, I do think it's an excellent idea to have Wayne coming back and working with Greg. We have significant resources that Wayne has done an outstanding job investing. And in order to follow the rules, it seems like this is the way we have to do it. So I, I support it.
So let me ask you this, couldn't a separate person be appointed treasurer for a year and a half? I mean, is it, or was that contemplated? I mean, again, one, one was a surprise. I didn't know that there'd been a change in plans regarding our current treasurer, but so this was, but was that, I mean, I'm.
Commissioner, no, we, we really didn't consider a separate appointment. You could appoint someone as long as they met the residency requirement as treasurer, but as Commissioner DeR said, you know, we've been pleased with the work that Wayne has done as treasurer for the county during his tenure here. So our hope was to continue that work, but again, at the same time, be able to pass his knowledge and experience on to Greg Munn as he does that.
Who gets the treasurer, the salary for the treasurer for the year and a half?
No one.
I thought it was a separate salary that we pay for treasurer.
It is a stipend. The Elected Officials Compensation Committee determines the amount, but it's, it's a unique situation in that the treasurer historically has also been the finance director who is paid through the county structure. So if in fact, for instance, if Greg Munn runs for treasurer in 2020 and someone runs against him and wins, then we would have a separate stipend that we would presumably pay to that person who won that election. But since the chief financial officer, Greg Munn, who we've hired, will be paid his salary as CFO, he would not collect an additional stipend. Wayne would be compensated at an hourly rate based on his current rate for the work that he would do as treasurer. And I would not collect any kind of compensation at all, just as the, you know, on paper appointed treasurer.
Further discussion?
No.
Okay. Seek a motion then.
I'll move board signature of order number 2019-024, appointing Tom Anderson as Deschutes County Treasurer.
And I'll second it.
Further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner DeR?
Yes.
Chair votes no.
Okay.
So the next item, item number four on the agenda, and this is the consideration of county administrator's signature for economic development loan conversion. This was a economic development loan made to Laird Superfood, and I think we've got Judith here and some of the representatives of Laird's. So welcome. Why don't you come up and tell us the successes you've had? I was out and got to do it on the Maiden Sisters tour a couple, three weeks ago and really enjoyed seeing what you're doing and the whole business, et cetera. Thanks, Cappy, for all your help with that.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Capriall. I'm with Edco and Sisters. And I'm here today with two Laird Superfood representatives. Jamie Eichman is the COO and Valerie Els is the CFO of Laird Superfood. And we would like to ask you for conversion of the Deschutes County Economic Development Loan Fund. The company has complied with all of the requirements of the agreement. They have been diligent in their quarterly reports to me and are here to say a few words and with their gratitude for the loan and all that he's done to enhance our economy.
Thank you. So first of all, thank you so much for the support. I, we really could not have gotten where we are today without the support of this program, which is truly being a thriving business in central Oregon right now. You know, initially at application, we started with four employees and intended on adding 25. And right now we are at 86 employees and just continue to grow. You know, through this growth too, we're able to create strength and contribute back to the community that we're in. So both as a company and individually, we are heavily involved through volunteerism and being able to donate back to our community. So it's, you know, we're growing our business, gangbusters, and then can also, can also really contribute back to, to the communities we're involved in. So thank you.
Want to add anything?
Well, again, this is, we've only had one other loan with this program, and this program is significant, particularly in our rural communities. For this, for this particular loan, they used it to not only create new jobs, but had new production facilities, and they were able to, now they're on building three, which is going to be under construction soon. But at the time that they utilized this, it was very, very preliminary. It was checking all the boxes for a growing company. They were being very conservative initially with their growth, and they needed these funds to assist with their expansion. And they're in a position of transition, going into the new buildings. So it really impacted the company, and the return on investment's been significant in the region and Sisters. Thank you again.
If I could just say a couple of things about the loan program really quickly. Of course, you're all familiar with it, but not everybody in the room might be. So we have a loan program where we, the board at their discretion can grant loans to companies who are seeking to create family wage jobs in Deschutes County, either through relocation or through expansion, or startup for that matter. This particular loan was for $50,000, and it was to create 25 jobs. As you've heard, it's, we've obviously done well more than that. The program's been in place for, I don't know, at least since 2010. It might have been earlier than that. Since that time, it's helped create, by my count, which is just the loans, the number of positions we asked for commitment for, at least 800 jobs. If you look at Edco's numbers, it's really more like 1,200. And as you see here, we committed to providing a loan for 25 jobs, and they've actually created 86 in the community. So that's kind of the support that, that makes those things happen. This particular loan, again, was 25 jobs, $50,000. It is in the community of Sisters. I think it's only the second loan maybe we've ever had in Sisters, so that's kind of exciting. And the, the terms of the loan are that the company has two years to create the number of jobs that they've committed to, and then they must maintain those jobs for another year. If you look at the agreement that's, that you got with your packet, the creation date really wasn't until the end of this year, but they have created their jobs well ahead of schedule and maintained them ahead of schedule. So that's another provision of the loan, is that if you create your jobs quickly and you maintain them for 12 months, then you can have your loan converted to a grant. So that's what we're asking for today, is that we convert the loan to a grant that does not need to be repaid. And if you approve that, we'll have a letter prepared for the county administrator's signature to send to Laird Superfood. And you might want to, I didn't hear you talk about what you do at Laird Superfood. We actually have some of your products up in our kitchen, but you might want to talk about that.
Yeah, so, you know, I mean, ultimately, we are, are wanting to be this natural food company that continues to expand and grow our product offerings. However, this time, we're primarily superfood creamers and hydrate products, so really creating a good source of fuel for your day from morning till night with this daily ritual of, of waking up in the morning and grabbing your coffee and having your activate jump start all the way through the rest of the day, where you get your hot cacao and your turmeric creamer at the end of the day. So really just fueling everything that we're doing every day, whether you're an athlete or a corporate warrior or working mom. Yeah, great products.
And there is some creamer up in our kitchen. I encourage you to try it.
Just a little congratulations. You know, this is the traded sector opportunity, create a product or service in central Oregon, send it out to the world. So thank you for being a great example of that. Also, these are kind of those last in dollars on a big project. So, you know, Deschutes County, with these dollars, being able to, you know, help you get over the hump, to make the commitment to expand and, you know, create jobs here in central Oregon. So congratulations and thank you very much for what you do.
And as a resident of Sisters country, I just want to say how delightful it is to have family wage jobs in Sisters. The people I know that have graduated from like Sisters Coffee to Laird Superfoods, you know, it's just a positive message that I always hear from them. And, you know, thank you for being there. We want to keep our end of the community prosperous, and you've, you've been a welcome addition. So thank you.
You know, going on the Sisters, or Maiden Sisters tour with, a few weeks ago and seeing your facilities and hearing all about it was, I think a lot of people in the county don't really realize how much business is going on, you know, traded sector, et cetera, in Sisters and growth. It was pretty interesting. And people need to go out and drive through those business parks and look at them. Someday you'll probably have tours on a regular basis, I guess, or maybe you do already, but with your new building. So thanks for coming and joining us.
Oh, and I also want to thank Cappy for helping us immensely with getting horses because for the first time in decades, the commissioners rode in the Sisters rodeo parade. And we're going to have Serapis for the next parade, but it was an amazing experience. And Cappy, you stepped up way beyond. So thank you, thank you, thank you. She's a member of the saddlebags, by the way.
All right. So what we need is a motion for county administrator's signature for economic development loan conversion.
So moved.
And I second it.
Okay, Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner DeR?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thank you very much for coming today.
Thanks for coming.
Yep. So the next item is, is really two items that I asked to at least be able to talk briefly with Janice Gerson from Health Services about the amendments to the Pacific Source documents. Munn, join us, Janice. You know, just as part of our ongoing understanding of how the department works and, and which we've, of course, gone through a lot before the budgets proceedings and this, and during the budget proceedings, and we've, I know we're, we're, our, this is, has to do with our contracts with the community, CCO is.
Coordinated care.
Coordinated care organization that provides the three county area, basically, a promise of payment to our, so of our departments for, in the health department, for services. And it looks like we've got two amendments here, and one is for going back in time, taking out some measurements that they, somebody was maybe asserting of performance measures. And then a new one, looks like it's creating a couple of new ones and maybe, and I don't know, I was curious whether this was the whole new contract for 19 or whether, so those were kind of my questions, is if you just walk through. And I was kind of interested in what led to the, as we've had, you know, over several years, working with the CCO, contracts and figuring out how it works, what, what led to this need to clarify the amendments on the first, on item number five, so.
So the first amendment is an amendment of the 2017 to 2018, so the 2018 contract. And I think honestly, it's a cleanup on the part of the CCO, just going back and noticing in their reconciliation that there are some metrics that were never performed on, never actually measured. Some of the things that needed to be put in place to implement those metrics were not in place, and so they wanted to make sure that the CMHPs in the region were not harmed in any way by the withhold that is implicated with those metrics. So they're simply removing them from the contract formally and distributing the weight of those metrics to the three metrics that remained and that we were able to perform on. So all three counties were made aware of that. There were email exchanges. We were comfortable with them removing the metrics. It had no fiscal implication for us, and they're just wanting a signature as a kind of cleanup of the 2018 contract.
And so the three things that are in here on page 26 of the packet, it's called Exhibit Three, one has to do with follow-up of hospitalization for mental illness, and then the other two have to do with children in custody, and one is for assessments and one is, well, I guess both of them are away kind of assessments, one's about wraparound services. Are those the only three measures that were used for the, for the CHMP success, or is there others, another whole category or something, or is this really the extent of the measures?
So those are the metrics that are related to the fiscal withhold. There are lots of ways that we have to perform on our contract, but these are the three metrics that are actually associated with a 5% withhold on the overall capitation amount. And at the end of the year, when there's a reconciliation and we're paid, we are paid that additional 5% if we met those three targets.
So it's really, it's withheld from the money all year long?
Yeah.
And then you prove that you've done it, and then we get that money? It's kind of like a, yeah.
It's an incentive. It's an incentive withhold.
Yeah, interesting. And so that involves some additional people that do this tracking, or is that how you monitor whether we've, is there, somebody's creating, have this specific data? Is that what you have, somebody that's in charge of like making sure those metrics are reached?
Yes. There are, there are supervisors associated with each of those programs that are tracking the data. So we have a supervisor who tracks our child assessment of needs and strengths data. That's the CANs metric. We have our access supervisor who's tracking our access to care timelines, which is one of the metrics, and so on. So, and they're usually relatively easy to track. They're pretty straightforward.
It's not a full-time job just to make sure.
Oh, no. No.
Well, I don't have any other questions on the first amendment. Do any of you have any questions on that or thoughts? Okay. And if you want, just do both the motions at the same time. And then on the second one, so is this the new contract for 19?
So this is the new contract for 19, and if you recall, we came before the board in mid to late December of 2018 with the amended, with the final contract for 2019, and highlighted at that time that there were a couple of issues that were still under discussion that we would come back with later once they had been completed. And mostly that had to do with the additional metrics. So we had had some proposals about what those might look like, and we had not firmed those up. We have since done so. So this amendment reflects that and a couple of other small changes. And again, since it, since it amends the overall contract, it needed to come back to the board for signature. And I can walk you through what the changes are.
Yeah, so, so we're back now on, and this Exhibit Three is, has those same measurements. Is that what you're?
Document number three.
Is Exhibit Three, or are you saying the?
Yeah, I numbered the documents because it was confusing, because there were a number of documents related to the 2018 contract and 2019 contract. But Exhibits one, two, three, and five are the exhibits of the 2019 contract that are submitted for review and for signature and board approval. And I can walk through each one if that's helpful.
Sure, that'd be good. I mean, it's, it's interesting for us to see what we're really contracting to do and kind of understand it. And that's what, that's what this represents, right? A lot of the scope of what it is, where they expect us to do?
Yes. This is their set of expectations for us. So Exhibit One had an amendment on page four, that's document number four in your packet, and it's Exhibit One of the contract, which is really the, the statement of work. And on page four, under Section Four, System of Care Wraparound Initiative, there was an increase, and this is really just because of population and OHA requirements, there was an increase in the number of wraparound cases that we, as a tri-county community, are expected to have open on any given month, from, I believe it was 48, 45, and it went up to 58. So the tri-county partners had a conversation about how we wanted to divvy up our responsibility for those numbers as separate CMHPs. And that hadn't been anchored in the 2019 contract at the time of signature. So that was one small piece that was finalized. We're all in agreement about those numbers. They're attainable, and that's reflected there in the red line version that you have in front of you. And I believe that was the only change to Exhibit One. Exhibit Two has a couple of changes on page one, and that's document number five in your packet, has a couple of changes. One is simply changing the language from a quarterly grievance report to a monthly grievance report, and that is reflecting that the Oregon Health Authority changed the requirement for the CCO to a monthly report. And so that, of course, trickles down to the CMHP. So they have to report to the state monthly. We have to report monthly to the CCO. On page two.
Just so I'm clear, so when you're saying there, there are changes, these are changes from what we saw in December?
Yes.
These were the kind of remaining issues that you had to work out with Pacific Source?
Joan, is this unusual to wait till June to get this? I mean, we're halfway into the year.
Well, I got it in early March.
Okay.
So it's, it, it sat with me for a couple of months. So that's why you're getting it in June, not in March. So that's my fault.
Okay, all right. Thank you for telling us that.
Pardon?
Thank you for telling us.
Yeah, well, it's the truth. It, it went on the back burner and didn't get to you as soon as it should have.
Okay.
So with that information, the other counties have already signed on to this because this is the three counties?
I don't know. I saw the email reminder to all three counties in my inbox about a month ago, which was what prompted me to get this back on the agenda, so I'm not sure.
I'll know on Thursday.
There you go.
So that was the change on page one of Exhibit Two, which is document number five in front of you. The other change is also very similar. We, the CCO has to keep a roster of providers in the community. They have to update it now monthly per OHA requirements. That means we also have to keep ours up to date monthly. So it just reflects that requirement. And then on page three of Exhibit Two, Section Nine, Behavioral Health Reporting, that's just reflecting that our new fiscal report now reflects the new way that we are being reimbursed under the contract, which is, if you recall, not just a simple capitation. It's now divided into fee for service, capitation, and program allocation amount. So it's simply, they just adjusted the reporting form for the quarterly fiscal report to reflect those three categories. So that's what that's referring to.
What's the third one? Capitation, fee for service, and?
Program allocation.
And it was all capitation prior to 19?
And then on page four, CMHPs will report quarterly data integrity audit percentages to the health plan using an audit tool approved by Pacific Source. This has always been in place. I think they just moved where that language lived into. in place, I think they just moved where that language lived into Exhibit Two. Exhibit Three, which is document number six in front of you, reflects the two additional metrics that the three community mental health programs agreed to since December, and those are number four and number five, they start on page two. They were the addition, and they're really preparatory for what is likely to be, what are likely to be metrics that show up in our 2020 contract around ED utilization and managing readmissions for psychiatric acute care. So these metrics were very simple, straightforward, easy to perform on, they were really asking us to provide workflows that would describe how we were going to use health information technology to track ED utilization of our clients, and to submit a plan that addresses both the barriers, challenges, and strategies that we'll be using to try to reduce psychiatric admissions within thirty days, readmissions within thirty days. So one of the things that the CCO is really trying to do is reduce the amount of time people are cycling through the hospital, through the PES unit or through Sage View for acute psychiatric situations, so the, the health information technology workflow has been submitted and accepted and approved, that's done, and we're in the process of completing the readmission work plan now, and it will be submitted before the deadline. So those were the two metrics that were added, they, they related to a five percent of the overall five percent withhold, and so it adjusted the other amounts down to allow for that withhold amount.
Real quick, what does, what is a workflow, and what, what does that, you said work, I read it and I had questions, I don't understand.
Workflow is basically just the process you're going to use to do the thing, so we have a system called PreManage that notifies us when one of our enrolled clients shows up in the emergency department, and it's just a way to make sure that community mental health providers know very quickly when someone's showing up in the ED, so we needed to tell them, well, what are we going to do when we receive that information, what are we going to do on behalf of that individual?
And the enrolled is this, enrolled SPMI, that's this.
Serious and persistent mentally ill?
Yeah, mentally ill. So this kind of combines with what, when we're talking about the stabilization centers and the, when I came back from one of my trips and brought up that, well, really it's the CCOs that care about the expense of mental health within the hospitals, this is, this is kind of reflecting that, that's, that's, those are, these changes are trying to reduce the amount of that use of the hospital.
They're trying to reduce the amount of the use of the hospital.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, good, all right, well, that's interesting to hear about, and any questions?
I have a question about number five.
Yeah.
When it says to decrease the hospital psychiatric, hospital readmissions?
Yes.
To decrease, does that mean that you're going to try and reach out to them in private counseling so that they don't have to go back into the hospital, because I thought we were trying to be more helpful?
So, it, it means, so remember that this is a metric that applies to all three counties, actually, Deschutes County performs pretty well on the hospital readmission metric already, Jefferson and Crook have had some additional struggles, so I think we're all trying as a central Oregon community to really take a look at how to do in-reach when people are in the hospital, and do very quick engagement when they are released from the hospital so that they are not cycling back in. So it's things like, I leave the hospital with a plan to meet with my primary care provider, to get my medications checked, and to meet with my clinician, to check in and make sure that my safety plan is in place, and then I no-show for those appointments, and then I am out of medications, I'm symptomatic again, and I'm back in the hospital, and so we really, both, and just in terms of human suffering, we'd like to reduce the frequency that that happens, and also because of cost. So the plans that we will work on in that regard are really focused on doing more with our peer and case management services and quick access to psychiatry to ensure that people actually show up for follow-up appointments, and sometimes that's a, that's a Herculean task, but that's what we're working on.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
Oh, it did.
Okay.
I mean, you know, it just sounded like, you know, if someone needs help, but then again, if they have been in the hospital and you come in and you do have a plan for them, you can make that difference so that they have the continuity of care and access to what is really their medicines, whatever that they're needing.
We need, we need them in our office, or we need to meet with them, so that's where we're really focused, we can make a difference if they're actually showing up, and we're learning more and more about how to effectively connect with people after hospitalization.
Okay, thank you for telling.
No questions?
No questions.
So, Sir Doyle, do you, did you have a chance to review these amendments?
I did, and Legal signed off on those, they are all consistent with what was represented to the board back in December, the other attorneys for the county, Jefferson and Crook have also been involved in, and I do believe Crook has signed.
Yeah.
I don't know about Jefferson.
Good, so entertain motions for approval of both of these?
I've moved, we have board signature of document number two zero one nine dash three one one, Pacific Source Amendment Number fourteen, and board signature for document number two zero one nine dash three two two, Pacific Source Amendment Number One.
I'll second him.
Any further discussion? Thanks for coming and explaining that.
Thank you, Commissioners.
With it.
Thank you, John.
So Commissioner Deere?
Yes.
Commissioner Yvonne?
Yes.
Chair of both, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so, let's see, those were all the, you moved from consent, so the first item now is the Presentation of the Noxious Weed Stewartship Award Recognition by Ed Keith.
Good morning, Commissioners, Ed Keith, County Forester, I'm joined by Spring Olson, who's the current Chair of our Noxious Weed Advisory Board. This morning, we have before you a couple of different recognition awards we'd like to present to a couple members of our community, this is really timely as, as the weather's turning warmer and weeds are prolifically sprouting following our spring rain, and the fact that we do have some significant efforts coming up this weekend, we're hosting the Let's Pull Together event in coordination with the City of Bend, next weekend, the City of Sisters is having a Let's Pull Together event as well, and those are weed events meant to involve the citizens and get them out, and helping to pull weeds in public places, and also teach people about what noxious weeds are, how to identify them, those sorts of things, so with that in mind, I'd like to just describe briefly our two awardees that we'd like to recognize this year, this is something that we try to do annually, is recognize members of the community that have significantly provided efforts towards the control of noxious weeds in our community, so the first one we have is the Bend FC Timbers, which is the soccer club, and Tara Polinski and Jen Devene are here, maybe they could join us at the other table. So that the Bend FC Timbers have, over quite a few number of years now, actually provided quite a few kids as part of the Let's Pull Together event, to really get a lot of people involved, so it's, it's, it's pretty significant to remark that even though that the, the Timbers is really a soccer club, that they're actually devoting time towards noxious weeds, which is something completely different, but that, you know, involving youth and understanding what noxious weeds are and involving them in the control of those is something that we really wanted to recognize, is that they have been involved with that event over the years and continue to be involved, and I think they're planning on, on having us, continuing it out this weekend down at the Old Mill District as well, so I don't know if they'd want to remark, but we've got Tara Polinski, who's the Executive Director, and Jen Devene, the Director of Operations for the Bend Timbers.
Yeah, just thank you, I, I think it's awesome for our families, our kids, our coaches, to take part in our community, and we felt Jen really started this initiative about four years ago, and just to get ourselves and get our families out there, and really valuing, you know, our community and learning along the way, we've learned a lot, I know I've personally learned a lot about noxious weeds, but it's a fun opportunity, and we are treated very, very well, and we appreciate that, and there's lots of hoopla afterwards, but every year we do it around this time of year, so thanks for letting us be involved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, so I, I thought I'd mention, so we, we do have two, two presentations, and I'll just give you an overview of both, and then maybe we can do a kind of a group presentation of the plaque for the picture, so.
Yes. Before you get to the second one, so, do you have a certain area you do it in, or are you assigned where to go, or how do you?
Go ahead.
We usually go to the Old Mill, it's just easy for all of our families to meet there, and that's usually where the entertainment and sort of the fun part comes after, so we usually always attend the Old Mill.
And you cover a certain portion of the Old Mill, or?
There's, right along the river, but everyone in charge at Let's Pull Together kind of lets us know where to go and how to do it, and what we're pulling, what we're not pulling, and so.
If I could speak, I'm one of the main educators for that, that regional area that we do the weed pulling, and it's really important to, I help them identify the difference between our native wildflowers and our noxious weeds, because they often look similar, so it's really been a joy to walk that river corridor with the youth, and help them identify what is good to keep and what is acceptable to remove, so thank you guys so much for that.
And who, how many kids are involved in the, the FC Timbers?
Yeah, so we have about just over three thousand kids playing soccer here in central Oregon, that's recreational, competitive, five years old up to nineteen years old, and in our competitive program, we have about four hundred and fifty kids, and really that's who we, we draw on to come participate, because those families, we see day in and day out, you know, practices, games, et cetera, and so we probably get over a hundred kids out there, kids and family members, on the Saturday, coming up this Saturday, so we'll be there from nine to noon, all along that river corridor there.
And what's FC stand for?
You're the second person this week that's asked me that, football club, yeah, that's a common term in, in the soccer world.
Okay.
I know, football, it's very confusing.
Husband that was a soccer star, but I don't know much about it.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Okay, great, thanks.
As a mom who had three boys playing soccer for a long time, I love to hear what you're doing with them, because they can't always just kick the ball, you know, that's great to have them give back, and thank you for organizing that, four years, that's impressive.
Thank you, thanks.
So our second awardee is, his name's Frank Hipst, he's a resident here in Bend at the River Rim Community, and I first became in contact with Frank when he called me to let me know that he thought that there was a noxious weed called orange hawkweed in his neighborhood, turned out that it was published in a, in a, in a local book, I believe, if I remember correctly, Frank, and he was comparing some of the notes in the book to some what were to be wildflowers in a, in a meadow in the community there, and it turned out to be quite a significant orange hawkweed infestation in, in this common area, and so I've been working with Frank and other members of the River Rim Community for, going on probably three years now, not, orange hawkweed's actually one of our highest priority weeds, it was listed as a Class A noxious weed, both as this, both at the state level and the county level, so it's an important one to detect early and try to keep under, under control, or hopefully eradicate. Frank's also volunteered his time to control spotted knappweed, both in his community and on adjacent Bend Parks and Recreation lands, and he, he continues to be, you know, kind of a relentless force in trying to keep noxious weeds under control in his neighborhood and in, in the region around Bend, he'd recently found a new orange hawkweed plant a couple, three miles from the River Rim Community where he lives, that was a new, a new plant, so it's, we need people like Frank out in the community, you know, with their knowledge and, and, you know, a keen eye to, to try to keep the noxious weeds infestation small and under control, because we can't do that alone, we rely on, on a lot of people in the community to help spread that word and help us by reporting those new infestations so we can, we can jump on them and keep them under control in a timely manner, so I would invite Frank up if he had a couple remarks, we could probably bring one more chair up. Go ahead and take mine.
Good morning.
Thank you for your efforts, Frank.
Good morning, Commissioners Anderson, Deere, and Yvonne, I am especially appreciative of the Deschutes County Noxious Weed Program and the Noxious Weed Board, they've given me an enormous amount of assistance in a, in a rather intractable problem I discovered in 2017. The Elk Meadow was created as a part of the planning process, actually, a circuit court order was brought to establish a meadow and a corridor for wintering elk in our community, and we're on the southern urban growth boundary of Bend, so we have a large, somewhat, some, on the order of fifteen acres that is left as a natural area with public paths around for people to enjoy and walk their dogs, and, and it's very well, is very popular, and it struck me that this wildflower-looking weed may not be what it was, and so I went home and looked it up, and the book that I looked in, because it's a Bend weed, I looked in the nature of Bend, and I want to give that plug to LeAnn Craig, she included a chapter in her book, excellent book, on noxious weeds, and gave the background of orange hawkweed, and to identify that positively, I called Ed Keith. I am a retired civil engineer, licensed in the state of California, and I am a former employee of the City of Bend and the Community Development Department, and I worked, a cowork, I was coworker of Julie Craig, who's on the weed board, and I'd like to just mention that Julie and Jimmy Hall also have given me enormous support, for which I could not be doing what I'm doing. I appreciate the weed program because it's in part a public education process, the county passed a very good ordinance in complement to the Oregon legislation, the Oregon revised statutes that established a noxious weed program to eliminate the presence and, and the nuisance of noxious weeds on our economy, and, and so it's a public education process, and unfortunately, public sees, you know, weeds being eradicated with, with herbicides, and they may have differing opinions about the appropriateness of that, and so we've been dealing with that in our community, and, and therefore, we're having to struggle to get this weed, get to, to go away, and so I think that's very important, that that's brought to the attention, and that's why I think the Noxious Weed Program deserves a lot of credit for getting the word out there in a way that the public can get involved and, and protect our county and protect our state, and so I appreciate.
Thank you, thanks for your passion on the subject.
Thanks for taking the extra time to look it up and actually, you know, you know, realize that we have a, a serious problem that I guess people weren't aware of, so.
That's correct.
I know, I, I go around with my shovel, I have some on my, on my property, and yeah, you, you just have to dig them up and get rid of them.
Yeah, so congratulations on the award also, so.
Just wanted to close by, before we do the, the actual presentation and photo, by thanking Spring Olson for her time as Chair, she's actually stepping down from that position to further attend to her budding private business, but she's served on the Noxious Weed Board for ten years, and so I just wanted to also recognize her significant contribution in, in volunteering her time as part of the boards, I just wanted to add that on as a, as a thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to share any thoughts, final thoughts?
Oh.
Thanks for your service for ten years, that's amazing.
Yeah, it's, it's been enjoyable, helping these guys create the Noxious Weed brochure, which we've amended a few times, and creating those educational materials for children, and having. and having the children attend that I've helped taught over the years, these large weed pull events is, it really kind of sets the tone for leaving on a good note of having our youth work with us and our community members and we've created this award a few years ago to recognize those individuals and community members for going above and beyond pulling noxious weeds, which is not enjoyable. I don't think there is one way to do it, so it's just been a good experience and great to be part of the community here and thank you guys for all your support over the years and honoring our individuals and group members here in Deschutes County for their efforts.
I want to say a special thanks to you, yeah, your passion and effort, we've seen you at the county fair many times, spending, you know, time at the weed wagon, but really having the passion and excitement on this subject, explaining, you know, the seriousness also, the invasive species kind of taking over natural forage is what we're dealing with here and it, and we live in a forested area, the Deschutes National Forest and if it really gets, you know, a foothold, it could really take out a whole swath of our environment that we don't want to see in that, that battle of noxious weeds, so thank you for your efforts and everybody for putting time in it and sharing and the education is the key because once you know, once you see it and you know that that does need to go away, you'll always see it, so, but it's just getting each citizen to kind of get over that hump, so, let's get a great photo.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing that, I haven't met you, you care about it, thanks. Great, thank you so much. All right, thanks, come on, you get here in the middle, I'll get on the other. Get us all in?
Almost. Okay, smile, we'll do a couple. All right.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Yeah. our dogs, I've never seen so much plant growth as there is now in the desert, it's the wettest I've ever seen it and the, you know, all the weeds are, things are growing that never used to grow on the dirt, you know, dusty paths.
We got it, well, the soil warms up and then if the rain comes right after that, it really takes up.
Yeah, it really does. Okay, our next item is consideration of Chair's signature, document number 2019-480, Notice of Intent to Award, Letter to Ascent Architecture and Interiors PC for Design Services for the Adult Parole and Probation Work Center Expansion and Remodel. So please, present that.
Lee Randall, Facilities Director.
Ken Hills, Justice Department Director.
So last week we met with the board and discussed the process that we went through in selection of the firm for design services for the adult parole and probation expansion and remodel and the work center remodel in the lower level of the same building. Today you have before you the Notice of Intent to Award for that contract, following the signature, if so approved, the letter, there would be a seven day protest period and then at the end of that protest period, we would, the county would enter into a contract with Ascent Architecture and at that point, the design work and programming in establishing the final parameters of the remodel scope would be undertaken at that point.
Any comments or, so we've been briefed on this, as Lee said at the work session, as to why we're making a choice to do the CMGC approach, which is, oh, that's not part of this though, right?
Well, it will, it is in the sense that the contract, potential contract with Ascent Architecture assumes in the document that the CMGC approach would be used for the procurement method and that informs the approach and the scope of work for Ascent, yep.
This is just for the, the choice of who we've picked for the architecture and design and we understood that, there's several proposals and, so I, I was supportive of it, so, any other comments?
No, it was, you did, you did an analysis of the different people that did apply, so it seemed like you'd been very thorough in your research, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, and the big picture, we're going to bring in parole and probation offices together and, you know, the campus master plan is, this is one of those first steps that really making the, making the moves, so I do support that also. So I'll move signature, Chair's signature of document number 2019-480, Notice of Intent to Award Letter to Ascent Architecture and Interiors PC.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay. Mr. Yvonne?
Yes.
Mr. Edar?
Yes.
And Chair of the chest, thank you.
There you go.
All right, our next item is discussion of the 2019 video lottery fund allocations. We had a few remaining items that we need to discuss.
Judith, you're administrative services, actually we're talking about the 2020 video lottery.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So this is for next year and I know you've seen this three or four times.
What says that's the title of the agenda item?
Does it, well then that's my.
All year, I'm just reading what was given to.
Oh, shame on me, then that is my fault, so 2020 is what we're looking at and this is a continuation of a discussion you've had a couple times, we've been kind of picking at it a little bit at a time. The last time we met, I believe on the 15th of May, you pretty much finalized your allocations and then subsequently I realized that I wasn't very clear on one of them, so I just want to make sure that I have your intent accurately reflected on the Central Organ Council on Aging Service Partner amount, you have an email from me that sort of explains the issue at hand. When we met on the 15th, the board had allocated $50,000 out of the $75,000 request for COCO, Central Organ Council on Aging, and what I wanted to clarify with you and did in my email is that the request that COCO made was actually for $75,000 and included $50,000 for general operations, which is a $20,000 increase over last year's, and then an additional $25,000 for equipment and finishing up a sort of a, they call it a facelift, but a bit of a remodel of the Bend Community Center so that it can be used for the Meals on Wheels site and for the nutrition program site and some of, some of what you allocated last year, so last year you did allocate a total of $50,000, $30,000 of that was for operations and $20,000 of that was for some initial equipment to do that remodel and to buy some commercial grade, I think it's ovens and appliances, I guess I should just say, I didn't bring my list with me of what that is, but they've purchased some of those things this year but they have a need for more, so that's the request, the request is $75,000, $50,000 for increased need for operations at the meal site and then $25,000 for additional equipment and remodeling of the community center. When you allocated the $50,000, I did not make that clear, so I just want to give you another opportunity to determine how much you want to allocate to Central Organ Council on Aging and then I understand you also have a request before you for some additional funds for the Sun River Chamber, which is currently at $35,000, I didn't include that in here, but, and you may want to look at other resources for that or whatever, but that can, you can, if you want to have that conversation at the same time, so that's really where we are, is $50,000 the appropriate number that you want to allocate towards COCO and what do you want to do with the Sun River Chamber?
So, initial thoughts on that?
They're asking 50 plus 20 plus 20.
They're asking for 50 plus 25.
Okay.
So 50 for operations and if you, one of the other things I stuck in your packet is their, what we call an investment worksheet that kind of explains the increase in needs, so currently for operations they're getting $30,000.
30 plus 20 plus 25, okay. I'm just thinking the big.
Yeah, and then they're asking for an additional $25,000 for the community center for upgrading the kitchen and making it suitable for, apparently there were some real needs in terms of just even getting it suitable for doing a meal program.
So, so to me, I mean, this is a significant request, I think it's the biggest request we have and, you know, significantly larger than a lot of the requests we have and the growth of it from one year to the others is significantly larger, so I think that was the concern I had when it was first proposed and then we learned that we, we thought we'd been at a $50,000 level, so it seemed like just a 25, but that was an increase, so my concern really is, I don't know anything about the rest of their budgets, but it seems like a lot of reliance on this fund for their, and I guess that'd be my only thought is, you know, see what other funding they get, I, I don't think we have anything that's, I mean, 30 is about the largest other individual one we, or 32 I guess we contribute, other than an Edco, you know, the Edco contribution, which lottery funds are specifically designated to help, you know, business development, et cetera.
And within the service partner category, you're right.
I'm just troubled with that much growth and I.
So I would, I'd, generically I'd like to show support, but also I'm seeing possibly a work session so we all kind of understand how they're funded, what their big picture is, what their future could be, so we can have just that, you know, one, one work session powwow where we talk about it, so.
And they're happy to do that?
Yeah, I'm sure they are, yeah.
They would have come today and actually, you know, I think we just thought this would be kind of a simple item and they didn't really need to, but if you want them to come back and talk more about their operations and what their needs really are, we can do that, if you want to, my suggestion would be, you determine what you want to do today and then if, if after they come back you decide you want to amend that, that we amended at a future date, but the service partners particularly, and the other organizations as well probably need to get a good idea of what they are looking at for next fiscal year, so it'd be great to finalize what we're doing in the lottery fund today and then again amend it if you want to after you hear more from COCO.
And currently we do have $80,000 allocated for emergency food, clothing and shelter.
Yes, that goes to United Way, we used to do something, this was well before your time, but we used to do something called a community grant program where we, it was a separate grant program and it was just once a year and the board would allocate funds for emergency food, clothing and shelter, so there were a number of nonprofit service providers that actually benefited from that, but at some point in time we realized we were kind of doing the same thing United Way was doing with some federal money and it was silly for us to be doing it separately, so the $80,000 that is in this program, we actually give to United Way to manage and administer on our behalf and so they do it in conjunction with their federal funding, it's separate, but at the same time, and a little bit of that money, very little, about 1.5% goes to them to administer the program.
And so for me, I was on the United Way, United Way Board for a number of years and it's a very broad base of things it allocates to and it's kind of a, kind of like a middle person between our money and all those organizations, so that's really a different kind of, I mean, that, that one is of that size, but it goes to lots of other organizations, kind of like we do. I'm, I think I'm comfortable at a level of $40,000 until I'm, you know, convinced why it should be more, that's a third, that's $10,000 more than we'd given two years ago and I, I just, yeah, I, in terms of the perspective of other organizations with significant needs, you know, we have a limited budget and we kind of juggle all of the different, you know, service partners, I mean, they're all across all walks of life, all different kinds, from kids to.
Seniors.
Seniors and everything in between and.
So if we do the $40,000 then that means that we still have, we're over still $10,000.
That would, right, you would still have a net $10,000.
So we'd still have $10,000 which we can work with.
That's correct and I'm sure you want to discuss more, but if, at the end of, when you decide what you want to do, I guess what I'll also need to know is how much of that you want to go towards operations and how much towards a one-time purchase of equipment, if any, but just so we can keep track in their agreement of what the money is to be used for.
I propose 30 of it towards operation, 10 towards equipment, be my per.
And I support that.
I support that too.
And having a conversation with them sometime in the near future.
Yeah, because we were negative with it at 50, so.
We were even.
You were even at 50.
But we have an undesignated, we're, we have a negative balance on undesignated, right, or do we, or are we saying 7,000 still on undesignated?
Oh, for, undesignated was 7,082, that's a subtraction because I do this sort of crazy worksheet that subtracts as you go, but 7,082 is what's in undesignated and that again is kind of.
I'm just worried about having enough in those little categories, so we'd put 60,000 in that one-time projects, which were going to be targeted towards fire prevention issues and housing that we, we haven't designated that, so, I mean, if we need more in undesignated, I guess, or we're, there's a request for additional from Sun River Chamber, if we increase that, we could reduce the two to be determined one-time project.
Or, well, you have, so if you do the 40,000, which I get that you haven't voted on yet, well, sort of, in a way, but 40,000 for COCO, that leaves, you now have 10,000 that you could either use for Sun River Chamber if you want to do it out of video lottery or you could put it towards undesignated or towards your projects.
Oh, I see, I see.
So you have 10,000 that you've freed up essentially.
They're actually asking for 9,000.
They are, but you, yes and no, so you gave them, if you look at the Sun River Chamber, they asked, they were receiving 34.5 last year, but you gave them 35, so it's actually really only 8,500 that they need to make up their request and I think there was some discussion among the board about using TRT, but I wasn't a part of that, so I don't know if you transit room tax for that, but there's, again, there's money in the lottery fund if you want to do it this way.
So, so first are we, do we all agree on the 40,000 for the?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so and then we'll follow up with the work session, so then moving on to the Sun River Chamber.
Is a package.
You can do it all at once, yeah.
I don't think we usually, we just kind of, yeah, so moving on to the Sun River Chamber, this, we had a request and we also had, they shared a strategic plan, then last week we'd asked for their budget and the profit loss to date, which I believe I forwarded to each of you, I brought that today and was looking at it, so the original, the request or the allocation this year was 34.5, they'd requested more than that, we'd just increased it 500 and then they made a second request, so thoughts, I guess we'll just go through our thoughts each of us have on the maximum request and anywhere in between and where we are, so.
Well, I mean, I want to be a partner, make sure, you know, the Chamber of Commerce promoting small business, economic activity, being a partner in the Sun River area, so I'll just show in general support in the big picture here, long history of partnership on this also, yeah, so those introductory comments.
And I, they are working on increasing the membership dues by 4,000, so I think that's significant, so if we did the 8,500 this year to help them complete their budget, I think that's a position that we should take, they are partners.
Do either of you know the number of members in the Sun River Chamber of Commerce?
No.
No, there may be somebody in the audience that knows.
Yes, maybe someone can tell us.
Does know that.
Do you have a number offhand?
John, do you have a number on that?
400.
400, okay.
400 numbers.
So I guess from my perspective, I, I'm not really comfortable having the county, I mean, these are lottery funds and it's the only chamber that we contribute to and we contribute, I think philosophically, because they don't have a city, they have city-like things, extensive city-like businesses there, in the other, other cities, Bend and Redmond and Pine can contribute to their chambers and I think most of them do, but I, I'm uncomfortable having us be the primary funder, I mean, it, to me, chambers, they're for the benefit of the members and so the members to me should be the primary funder of their organization, it's, I don't, so I, I'm, I'm in favor of an increase, but I'm more inclined to be closer to 40,000, which is in line with what they're attempting to do with membership dues, I am open to the issue of whether there'd be any additional money from the transit room tax because there is a certain amount of tourism component that they do, but I'm not really supportive of going above membership amounts from the lottery funds, so I'm kind of in the middle, I guess, I don't know. And we have increased this in the past, I mean, it was a few years ago, it wasn't even 34.
So there's always been a pressure for more resources from the counties, the counties' funds to go to the chamber and I've always wanted to see the chamber be more independent, in fact, the value, the Bend Chamber of Commerce many years ago decided not to take dollars from the city and the Bend Chamber is very much independent, so different chamber, different environment, but think of the value of that, advocating for businesses. environment. But think of the value of that advocating for businesses to your local government, to your other agencies around you without direct strings attached is valuable. So my point is I would like to see that as a trajectory, you know, independence in the future. As I say, I'm not opposed to supporting financially, but that's been a statement and a motivation of mine is just to help the organization be successful and the more independent that can be, the better for all parties, I figure. So as I say, I'm still not kind of laying out numbers here. I'm...
Well, you need to. I mean, that's where we're going. So, but where would you feel comfortable? I mean, we're just talking here and we're deciding this, so.
Well, so I would...
Well, you can do like we did with Sisters. We can, we can ask them to match the last 3,500. You know, we could give them additional 5,000, but then say, if you get more members, then we'll be happy to match you. I mean, I do believe that they're unincorporated and I feel that they are a real asset to Deschutes County. Sun River Resorts, the amount of visitors we have that are there are increasing on a daily basis. It's with summer again and I think helping them at this time is really, it's a win-win for both of us. And I do believe that they haven't been maybe financially rewarded as much as other incorporated places such as the City of Redmond.
Well, so getting down to it, I would support putting in that $35,000 number and then another line item for a one-time. So then it's obvious next year when we're talking about it, you know, what's the status? Where are we going with this? You know, so if it's $5,000 on a separate line item, then it'd be $40,000. And then just be a reminder to have a discussion about, okay, what's the, you know, what's the level of support and why for a, as I say, I urge the organization just to be that strong business service organization that's independent, advocating for its businesses. So I would support a separate line item.
And the 5,000 would be a one-time towards building membership? Is that what I mean? Or just, or just a one-time contribution to be revisited next year, just to be used for whatever the chamber needs to use it for? Yes?
Well, yeah, I mean, so one of the reasons I want to see the budget is really to see how the money gets spent, you know, and 21,000's on rent net, I mean, it says, because we, they charge out some, so that's, you know, a quarter of their budget is rent. I'm not sure. One question I did have on the profit and loss between the two years, and maybe John can answer this, is it shows website development as being $5,500 a year. That seems like a really high website development charge. And John, if you have any comments? I mean, it's one thing to buy a website for 5,500, but to have it each year, that seems like, do you want to come up and join us?
Say hi. You're in the room.
So we have John Holland, who's the, are you the chair or the president of the chamber?
Chair.
Chair, president?
Board member of chamber.
Board member, okay. So that was a question I asked him.
Commissioners, Tom Anderson, thank you for allowing me to testify this morning. So what that is, is our monthly fee to take care of all of the calls and input we get and send out our magazine, which you've seen a display of our magazine. We send those all over the United States. COVA sends their requests to us over the internet and we mail out for them. But it's that whole coordination of that with our members and putting out our weekly newsletter, that whole sort of thing.
You're paying somebody 5,500 a year?
Yeah.
Okay. It's labeled website D E V, so it's not like it's really web...
It's the whole gestalt of the ability to have a fast-speed fiber line in the building and utilize that to communicate with everyone we need to communicate with. So that's the purpose for that. I think if I could digress really quickly, just on a different, slight different note on this, I understand your consternation in dealing with what we're requesting. The additional amount is to create or attract seniors to come and dedicate time, seniors in Sun River in particular, to counsel and work at the chamber. And we need someone to direct that entire program. And so we want to take advantage of the, of those people that are sitting home and don't have outlets, so that could be a, we could indicate that that's a senior program in a way. But what we really want to do is streamline South County with all of EDCO, COVA, the Service District, the sheriff, the police, the fire department, and begin to have a community communication for these kinds of things that we do and these other groups that do a lot of the same thing that we do. And so the idea would be to create a budget like this that we can utilize. And we do still think we're part of the TRT and I'm not arguing that, Tony, we've had that discussion and I understand. But we think there should be some funds there. But what we really need to do is not duplicate through EDCO, COVA, all of those different groups. And we're willing to take the leadership. I have personal and business contacts with those groups to make a pledge in the next year to work on attempting to reduce and streamline the whole process that we're talking about, lumping the Chamber, COVA, the Service District, police, all of that into this scenario of lottery funding or TRT, that sort of thing. But at the same time, we're saying, we want to, we want to do what you want us to do. You are half of our budget roughly and we need to do what you think we need to do. So we, we don't have a lot of direction at this point of exactly what you want us to do. We're happy to sit down with, with the three of you or other people that you would designate and create this scenario I'm describing for the benefit of all of us. I'm just throwing some quick ideas out there for you to contemplate.
John, as you know, you've had conversations with all three of us with Tom and we've had a lot of discussion about this. I'll just tell you myself, I'm not really clear about what streamlining South County means. I, and I don't really want to do that. We have a lot of business today to do. But my view of the Chamber of Commerce is really, it's a business organization to support business health. It's one of the oldest non-governmental entities in all of our communities. The Bend, they had a Bend Business, I forget what it was called, Commercial Club back in 1920. And I just think, I don't know that we need guidance from one, the Sun River Chamber for, with the Pine Chamber and with EDCO is this, you know, I'm not interested in a regional government approach with the sheriff's office. And I mean, so that isn't really what I'm, I'm interested in supporting money to the organization for. If you want to be able to get volunteers and seniors involved in helping promote business, great. And if that's a way to get, because you have a, you don't, to me, it's like you don't have quite a nucleus, a large enough, I forget what it's called when you get to a point where it's self-supporting. I mean, the reason that Bend Chamber can go independent of the city council, they did it really because of the political, they want to be involved in political things, the chamber, city council didn't want to, and so they split over that. But they have enough businesses here to generate a serious business. So I'm interested in helping you in the business, the health of the business community, the growing that and being, and if you, and if you think there's people that would rather volunteer in your organization than cleaning up trails or pulling noxious weeds or all the other things people do, that's great. But I don't know what this streaming thing is and I don't think that today is the time to discuss that. But I, I really question, because I'm on a sled board, Sun River, Lapine Economic Board, I know they have their own chamber. I just, if you guys all want to meet about joint projects, great, but I don't, I just don't have that need. So I, we can talk further about it, but that's a long way of saying.
Well, as I say, I mean, I've been saying it for years, business service organization. You know, my wife and I started a business in 2005. We've been a Sun River Chamber member this whole time. I would like to see the support for small businesses and that's what I, that's why I invest in when, you know, I'm supporting the organization. There's the, you know, the social aspect of it. There's the non-incorporated activity center of Sun River aspect of it. There's a lot of other aspects, but I'm always very motivated just for small business support. So.
Well, that's why we're there. And what I'm saying is that there's that possibility of streamlining some of the services, but really we're there to do what you want us to do in this case. So be it business, that is our priority and I'm not trying to take us somewhere else. I'm trying to show that we're, I'm trying to show that we're flexible and we need and want your input and your guidance.
I just want to move through this because we've, we've had some discussions, we'll have more, and we're, it's a pretty small line item for what we've got from today. Your final thoughts?
Well, I...
Additional thoughts?
Additional thoughts? I could agree with Commissioner DeBon that, okay, to do the additional 5,000 then if you're not going to go for 8,500. I would be happy to support that as an additional line item for them and motivate them and know that because they are unincorporated, I do feel that they, you know, $5,000 is, could be very helpful.
So I'm supportive of that also in terms of like a, kind of a designation towards this program you're trying to do. Critical mass was the word, the word I was saying. Do you have enough businesses to, so we'll do a 35,000, you know, continuity, whatever?
Operations.
Operations. And then this 5,000 towards your other program. And we'll look forward to your increased membership participation. Do we need a motion on that? I think we're at consensus.
No.
Okay. Thank you for the conversations.
Thank you, John.
Thanks.
Sorry, but you do have one more thing then. So you just did an additional five. You still have 5,000 to put somewhere. So where do you want to put it?
I assume it'd go to undesignated for now.
Undesignated, that's fine.
Take it up later.
All right. Then this is it. I'm going to finalize this work session.
All right.
I don't have to talk about it again until next year. And I will pass this along to finance so that they have a record of it as well. Thank you.
Super.
Judith, thank you for all your work and the fact that, you know, you've really hung with us on this and kept us balanced and been very upfront about the different histories of our requests because it's a significant amount of money that we are designating for our community and I appreciate all your work and thank you.
Yeah, so I want to say something too. So for those in the audience or anybody watching at home, this is Judith's last month doing this. She does both, what's that?
Twelve and a half more days.
But who's counting? Yeah, twelve and a half more days at noon or is that already? Okay, at noon. But does the, these grants and also the grants from the transit room tax monies, which we do, and has also worked with us for many years on our legislative agendas with the legislature, which we're just finishing up, and also the help with the STIF program and quite a few other programs, but, and then help with our presentations that, we go to the cities and stuff.
Well, I agree. I mean, sometimes we get into pretty complicated octopus issues and you're very organized and capable of really getting the spreadsheets and the data and the information organized for policy decisions because you kind of take the loose ends once in a while, but you've done a great job with that too. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Judith.
Thank you. I got a note here, but I don't know what it means. Him, item 20. Yeah, we could. We'd have to convene as, we have a hearing on the, let's see, I've got a couple of, planning 2020 and annual request and report. So these are both CDD. That would be after that. We're kind of looking at our schedule here. We've got a bunch of hearings on budgetary issues and there's going to suggest to me we'll move the wildfire hazard zone discussion in front of that because I know a lot of you are here maybe for that. We'll probably end up having a break between, before we get to the CDD report and hearing, depending on how long everything takes. Can I just ask, is there anybody here actually for the fees hearing? I mean, other than the works for staff, I mean, those of you know and love, any, any public testimony on that hearing? Okay. What do you think of that? Do you think if we should move the, it's been requested to move the wildfire in front of the financial ones?
Oh, yeah, okay. For the, yeah, okay. For the fire chief.
Maybe we have, okay, but...
In support of the fire chief would be the reason.
Okay. Well, it doesn't seem like the hearings will tell you. So maybe I'll get those on right after. Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm with that. So we're going to, we have items 16 through 19 are all public hearings. I think we'll, we'll move those because they're specific budgets and I don't, I don't have any quest to speak at this point on those. We'll move those after the wildfire hazard zone discussion. So we'll do that now. Is Zachariah here or are you doing, oh, you're doing it for him?
And Ed Keith should be possibly in the hallway. I've got to plug this in really quickly here and get some.
Yeah, we have several people here for this, I think. Is that different than the documents?
He's just, sorry, you have a hard copy.
Oh, good. Good. Thank you.
There you go.
That's not Sharon.
That's just slow starting. Sorry about that.
So Mr. Chair, just looking at the agenda. So then with the intention to be doing all those public hearings.
[music]
Till we do that or after lunch, after our lunch break?
Like, I think we could move through them fairly quickly, the public hearings.
So then the public hearing for the Community Development Annual Work Plan will be?
That would be after lunch.
After lunch, yeah, because there's very specific people here for that. And that was the request to speak, I was on that.
Yeah. So if you're here for the, I think we'll make a decision now that if you're here for the public hearing on the work, CDD, annual report and draft work plan, we'll do that when we reconvene at, probably at 1:00 or 1...
Let's set a time certain, that'll be, how about?
At 1:15?
Yep.
Okay. So we'll do that at 1:15. We'll continue the meeting over the lunch hour till then. So we're here for that specifically. Thank you. Sorry about that. We're, for some reason, we weren't able to get the times on this, so we weren't really sure how long everything had run. But thank you. Yep. Okay. Go ahead, Nick.
Very, very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Nick Lelac, Deschutes County Community Development Director and Ed Keith, our County Forester. Zachariah Heck, Associate Planner, has also been involved in this discussion and he's headed out for a short, for a short time out of the office here beginning at noon. So we were tackling this. We weren't sure what time the agenda was going to come up, but that's okay because we're a team and we, we all fill in for each other as needed. And Randy Scheid may be here, our building official. But really, the key is to talk about the wildfire hazard zoning map. And what I want to do is I'm going to give you a brief background of how we arrived at where we're at today. And Ed is going to talk more about the mapping itself. So last fall, in October, staff engaged the Board of County Commissioners to talk about this proposed amendment to the state residential specialty code, ORSC, and then draft in what is called as R 327. That's the specific rule. So we started last fall and at the same time that we talked about that, we also talked about this community services report from the University of Oregon a couple of years ago that was completed at the, at the end of the natural hazards mitigation plan process. We worked with FEMA with some money to audit our development code on natural disasters, the potential for natural disasters. And I do want to say, one of the things we don't emphasize enough is they talked about how far ahead of the curve we really are with our plans and our codes and everything. So they were really looking at how do we elevate to, to the next level with our codes and plans, et cetera. So we started that conversation last fall and we've continued it since then. The audit suggested many options, included roofing standards, steep slope ordinance, defensible space, wildfire mitigation plans for subdivisions, wildfire hazard combining zones. So a lot of recommendations came out of that. And we mentioned to the board, we would continue the conversation with the board before... And I do want to say, one of the things we don't emphasize enough is they talked about how far ahead of the curve we really are with our plans and our codes and everything. So they were really looking at how do we elevate to, to the next level with our codes and plans, et cetera. So we started that conversation last fall, and we've continued it since then. The audit suggested many options, including roofing standards, steep slope ordinance, defensible space, wildfire mitigation plans for subdivisions, wildfire hazard combining zones. So a lot of recommendations came out of that, and we mentioned to the board we would continue the conversation with the board before initiating, initiating any actions, of course. So at that meeting last fall, the board directed staff to continue to track R327 and then to revisit options in the new year, which was, which is what we did earlier this year. In January, the State Building Codes Division, which has jurisdiction and authority over, over all building codes in the state of Oregon, they approved R327. Deschutes County was very instrumental in the development and adoption of that, really advocating for as much local control and flexibility as we could possibly obtain through that process. And we were very successful. We then met with the board in February to explore what R327 might look like. And we all recognized at that point that before we start talking about the standards and what that might mean, we really need to know where might that apply in Deschutes County. So we really need to take a step back and talk about mapping of the county as a wildfire hazard area. Today, we have a map that's been in place for, gosh, almost 20 years where the whole county is designated as, as a wildfire hazard area. And we, there's a lot of new data, we have a lot of new resources, and state requirements that we need to apply to Deschutes County to determine what areas might be eligible for the new R327 standards. And really to help inform the board in its decision-making process. So what is R327? And Ed, you might have to remind me at what point I turn this over to you, because I could, otherwise I'd just keep talking. Oregon's, because we've done this presentation once or twice before, and, and I can't remember where we have the handoff. So our, Oregon's building code adopts amendments to the ORSC, as I mentioned, in January 2019, related to minimum standards for dwellings and accessory structures located in areas subject to wildfires. Local jurisdictions may adopt. Again, one of the best outcomes of this, in our opinion, is that it is optional, and certainly not everybody would agree with that. Others would prefer that it just be mandatory. So the board has a lot to consider in the future, not necessarily today. We want to, the goal of today is to present to you some concepts of the maps as a, as a starting point. So the board did direct CDD to create maps as a basis for decision-making for both land use and R327. And so we did that. We worked very closely with, of course, a partnership with CDD and Ed Keith, our County Forester. And we also convened a stakeholders group in late May to, to talk about the background that we're presenting with you, to you today, as well as the concept maps. So ORSC, R327, it applies to qualifying lots of record, a lot of technical stuff here, that must be located in a wildfire hazard zone. And that's what we're talking about, is what might that zone look like identified by the municipality, that's us, using criteria established by the Oregon Department of Forestry. And this is in administrative rule. So this is not statute, this is administrative rule that implements statute.
So the word qualifying sounds like you're getting something, but I mean, it's really these building codes apply when you're in this zone, correct? I'm just making sure I'm reading it correctly.
It's optional for the board to decide if you want to apply it in the, in the, in the lots of record.
Codes apply to lots of record. I mean, and this is their words, but qualifying is an interesting word to be using. Yeah, yeah, congratulations.
I might just add that there's a couple other things that make it a qualifying lot of record, which I'm not entirely prepared to talk through all the criteria today, but, so they have to be in a wildfire hazard zone. But then there's some, you know, if a subdivision's 50% built out or more, or less, whether it's, you have the discretion to apply it to individual lots or lots of five or more. So that, so there's other things that might make it a qualifying lot of record. This is kind of the first step of, of that, is the, it has to be in a wildfire hazard zone, but then there's some other decision points that'll be further down.
Is it 50% less, less than 50%?
If it's over 50% developed, it does not, it would not apply or would not be a qualifying lot of record, correct?
Well, and just the way you're saying qualifying lot of record, those words go together. So that, that helps, you know, I'm glad I mentioned that, because that's interesting how you just use those words.
Exactly. Because within a map, you're saying a subdivision may be so mature that even though it's in the zone, that those lots are not going to be zone, or have the same building code applied.
That's correct.
Those, those unbuilt lots would have it, the, the current code if we adopted this.
Right. So, so for example, you know, thinking of a well-built-out community, Black Butte Ranch comes to mind, much more than 50% built out. So it may rank out as being in the map as a wildfire hazard zone, but it's essentially built out. So it wouldn't, the lots would be within the wildfire hazard zone, but wouldn't be qualifying lots of record, was my understanding of that.
It kind of creates a, you have more flexibility with the building you do on the remaining Black Butte lots than you do in a subdivision that isn't as built out, that has to have all these fire.
If you choose to apply those, yes.
If we ended up applying it, that's the, you know, so, okay.
So this is...
Do you want to sit there, or do you want to come up here?
So, again, Ed Keith, County Forester, just wanted to walk you through kind of how we came up with these maps then, because there's kind of like a lot of technical steps in, in actually establishing these maps. But, so within the administrative rule, we have essentially four criteria that are each assigned a score. The scoring ranges from zero to 12. We actually start at three is our lowest value because of our weather.
We're winter there, too.
And, yeah, it's, it's, it happens to be hot and dry here in fire season, so we get a, we get a three for that, out of the range from zero to three in the state.
So we could be a 10, really?
There, there are...
There's no 10s on that.
So, so we have, we have values that range from, essentially from three to 12. We can get up to a 12 if all the, if we max out all the points. Essentially, the way the administrative rule reads is if you rank out at seven or greater, as far as these points that I'll go over, then that's considered a wildfire hazard zone. So again, the weather, we start at three, that's a value for the whole, the whole county. That doesn't vary based on the area of the county that you're in. Then the slope are based on slope breaks, and again, you can see the point breakdown there, but essentially the steeper the slope, the more points you get. With the idea that, you know, slope is a driver behind that fire, fire behavior, so steeper slopes, you get more erratic or extreme fire behavior. Then the fuel hazard, so the fuel hazard is actually based on a fuel model. There's, there's 13 fuel models, but only 10 are considered because the other ones are actually logging flash. And so, so we consider the fuel models that are listed here, the ones that are either more flashy or harder to, harder to suppress are those ones that are three points. The ones that are either bare rock, that's your zero points, so like lava flows or, or, you know, the top of the Three Sisters are, are zero, you know, and on from there. So there's the fuel models, and then there's the actual fuel continuity or distribution.
So you're, this is a visual inspection of an area, and you're going through and saying, this, we think this looks like a fuel model five?
That would be one methodology. We actually went about it a little bit differently, which I'll describe on the next slide. So you, you could do that and kind of make that value, value, kind of somewhat of a value judgment is comparing the, the way the fuel models describes through a photo series and applying that. There's also a nationwide database, actually, of satellite data that applies these fuel models, and that's what we've used. The final one, the final one is, is fuel distribution. So if fuel covers 0 to 10% of a given area, then that's a zero point, all the way up to if it covers more than 40, 40% of an area, that's a three. So, for example, in an urbanized area, you could get to the point where there's really no vegetation left, that's going to, you know, be a low fuel distribution or usually a zero for that score. If it's predominantly still left with wildland fuels, then you're up to a three.
Are these pretty standard national criteria, or is this evolving? Because this is ODF's established criteria, but, you know, and I haven't really heard the term fuel hazard or fuel distribution.
Yes, they, there, there is a national data standard for that. The 13 fuel models have been in effect since probably the 80s.
Okay, yes, that's what I'm wondering.
Oregon Department of Forestry wrote this criteria, I believe, at the end of the 90s, and, and it's been that way, established in administrative rules since then. I don't believe it's been amended since then, to my knowledge. So again, then we're getting at the, the question that Commissioner Henderson asked, as far as where do we get this data from then? Weather, basically, that's an easy one. You know, if you're in Deschutes County, you have one value. The slope, we essentially use the topography maps, come up with those slope breaks in our geographic information system, and then apply the points depending on the topography that we have, based on the, the slope mapping. So, so where do we get the values for the fuel hazard? There's actually a nationwide database called Landfire. The aim of that is to have consistent data across the whole country for, for things like this. And so, so we've used a couple different data sets, that there's a, there's a whole suite, I don't know how many, but I'm, I'm going to guess there's probably 30 or 40 different data sets that Landfire compiles on a national basis. And, and so we essentially downloaded the data for Deschutes County. That data's available on a resolution that's very fine, 30-meter pixel essentially, and it gives a value to what's estimated to be in that 30-meter pixel. So there's literally millions of pixels across Deschutes County for, for each of those values. So that's where we came up with this initial data to, to make that map. Instead of kind of subjective human judgment, we've used the kind of national standard data to, to come up with the original map. So like I said, the fuel data is available on a 30-meter resolution. However, it explicitly states in the administrative rule that it's not the intent that the wildfire hazard zones be determined on a tax lot or ownership basis. So not on the finest scale available necessarily, but rather be determined as a landscape approach. That landscape is not specifically designed, so this is what we have to go off of and what that landscape is, and that'll be part of the discussion as we start to look at these maps, is what you all think is the right approach to look at from a landscape scale. So that, that'll be kind of one of the questions up for discussion or for you to think about. Like I said, we're presenting this to you for the first time, so not necessarily asking for decisions, but just kind of, these are, this is something to be thinking about, is how you might direct staff to come up with maps based on this landscape scale approach. So the, if you just apply this based on kind of the 30-meter pixels, without kind of the identifying on a landscape scale, are you in or out? Or, you know, do you meet the threshold of a wildfire hazard zone? This is essentially what the, the county looks like. So kind of a graduated scale of colors from that three, where we have just the, the weather, but there's really essentially it's flat, and there's no fuels. Say, you get a three all the way up to the steepest parts that are very thick with fuel. You end up getting a 12, so there are some 12s out there, mostly in places where, again, we have that kind of steeper topography, not necessarily on private lands that are going to be developed. You know, a lot of these are on, on buttes out in the national forests, for example.
So there are no 12s showing on our, this map?
Correct.
But when you go on a finer basis, then you're going to get up to a 12?
You can get up to a 12 on a finer basis. And so what we tried to do then is say, you know, how do we translate this very fine-scale data over into this kind of landscape scale approach? So, you know, so what we want to avoid is we don't want to have within a newly proposed subdivision, for example, say that you have a 12 over here and a three over there. And, you know, even on one given lot or across the street from the other, you have to build to this standard, and you don't, you know, it's meant to be applied on a larger scale than, than 30-meter pixels.
Yeah, but that's, you know, that's going to be the crux of all this, when it comes down to building, is because the, the standards change what the houses will look like, can be like, et cetera. What materials you use, I mean, which is going to affect, and so this, that's where the battle will be, is where, you know, are you in the zone or not? It's going to be an issue for people that don't want to, you know, do that hard, you know, the new building requirements. And that would be the issue about adopting it, is how many people it affects, so. But your, it's your next map that really shows that, lays that out.
Correct. So we tried to just came up with a few example level scales. These are not meant to be like the final version or anything like that. That would be up, up to you all to, to give us some direction on, on what is the appropriate level of scale, if you want us to proceed. This is just very preliminary data, so I mean, the choices would be, don't proceed at all, proceed, these are the scales that, that we'd like to do. And we're kind of scheduled to come back and talk to you next week about that. So this is just kind of very preliminary information to show you how we, you know, you may apply it. So...
Oh, yeah, you're on that map, okay. What are those two, CWPP subregions?
So one approach that we came up with, as just a, a way to come up with maps across the county, were that we do have the county divided up into regions based on our community wildfire protection plans. So those community wildfire protection plans, that, an element of those plans that goes into that is a risk assessment. And so each of those planning committees have come up with kind of subregions to talk about how we talk about risk within the plans. There's, I think, 40 plus or minus 43, 44 subregions that we've divided the county up in, just for planning purposes. They weren't drawn to do this. This was just a, a county-wide scale that we could say, you know, these are more landscape scale than kind of, you know, very small. So this was just one idea of how we could, you know, demonstrate how this may, may be applied. It could, you could make these regions larger, smaller, completely different. They, they do have some basis on geography, topography. So the community wildfire protection plans are based in part on fire protection districts. They're based in part on topography, so you'll see a lot, a lot of breaks at like river corridors or other obvious places geographically, like highways, major roads, those sorts of things.
So you're just bringing up that if we try to, the next step in going to classifying by map, you're, this is one approach, we would, we would involve that in the analysis, and the second is...
Right. You need to draw the line somewhere, so you know whether you're in or out. And one of the questions is then, how large are those areas that we try to calculate this value for? So this was just, this was just a, a way of containerizing that throughout the county on a set of lines that are already, were already established. You could choose any other sorts of lines. We, we were originally thinking we, you know, we could prepare all these maps. It actually takes quite a bit of computing power to come up with these averages, so we're averaging those 30-meter pixels up into a very large geography.
So this map show, is the C, Community Wildfire Protection Plan approach, this is what the map would look like?
Right.
We did it.
If we, if we use...
The zone is either in or out.
Those zones and, and added that up, and then, you know, essentially take all the values, do a mathematical equation to, you know, add up all the points, average them all out, round to the nearest whole number, you come up with this. So the ones that are red are to the nearest whole number seven, and if they're the tannish color, they're below that, so that they don't rank out according to that geography.
So just real cursory, looking at this, so we're, look at the whole Sisters region being in, basically Sisters country, most of it.
Except for the city.
Yeah, except for the city, and as you go east a ways, all of the Tumalo, west side of 97, from here to, most of the way to Redmond, plus the west side of Redmond, all of Sun River being in. So this would have real dramatic, there's no like room for small, small developed areas that are more safe maybe than the surrounding or whatever, if we adopt this kind of approach. I mean, that would be the issue that builders and development and people will have.
Right, yeah.
If I build down here, do I have to build that way? So, you know, interesting.
And again, this, this is kind of a more downstream decision, but something you should be aware of is you can actually then exempt areas with, within the wildfire hazard zone, but you can't add areas too. So we, if we adopted this map, not saying that we will, but this, we had to have an example to show you. You couldn't say city of, you know, well, we're not going to decide city of Redmond, but the area east of Redmond, it can't be applied. But in an area that is, say, you know, down by Sun River, the greater Lapine area that's in the red, it can be. But then at the discretion, I believe, of the building official, you know, they can ask for an exemption. But those would be things that, you know, we'd want your guidance on, kind of downstream, if you decide to implement this, so. So, one of the other questions we came up with is rounding, actually. I mean, we're down to kind of the, really in the detail. I mean, we're down to kind of the, really in the details here, but this shows, instead of kind of saying you're seven or above or seven or below, if you actually go out decimal points, so we're that close in some of those areas. The typical approaches, I understand, I don't believe Randy's come in the room, but in talking to the building official, Randy Shide, his typical approach is that if it's, you know, for building occupancy, for example, if you figure out the square feet and you come up with the building occupancy being, you know, ninety point one, the standard becomes ninety-one, you rounded it, you round up. The map that we showed you, the previous map, we just did the typical rounding rules, which is like if you're at six point five, you round to seven, if you're at six point four, you round to six. But that, there's no real guidance in the administrative rule about how you do that. So, I mean, that would be a question up for discussion, is like how typically, you know, do we use regular rounding rules or building official rounding rules? I mean, it sounds like kind of a, you know, really splitting hairs, but it ends up making a difference on the map.
Yeah, makes a significant difference.
So it's an interesting question to consider and something we'll probably have to talk through is how we go about that. I don't have, I just bring it up as a...
So the far east part of the county, is that true wildfire hazard zone or is that just the catch-all of the larger footprint?
Well, it is divided up, but it's no, well, part of it is because those fuels are, actually do burn pretty, I mean, you get a wildfire out in there, it's a significant fire, but also the continuity is there. So in some places that, I mean, if you look at the most urbanized places in the county, they're also, don't have the topography there, but the fuel continuity isn't there, and so those don't, are rising up as high.
The continuity is why that would be all red out there.
That's part of it. Part of it is you do have, you know, it's not all steep, but you do have some, you know, some topography out there, and then the fuel model also drives that, so.
Because, yeah, the raw data map, it just kind of looks like there's big white areas and big, it fades off to the raw data, so I'm just surprised it's all red out there.
Well, that's, yeah, and that's the effect, I guess, of using those protection plans or using some zone.
Yeah, so if you wanted, you know, if you wanted to go finer scale, those would drop, you'd have some areas that drop out and some areas that rise up, and that's the case if you go in kind of either direction. If you, we were, you know, also gonna do one by fire district. Actually, I think Tim over at CD has been working on that for over a week. That's how long the computations take to come up with that. We didn't get the map finished in time. But that's a larger scale, and actually, most of the fire districts actually don't rank out as a seven if you go on the fire district scale. So all these different scales have different implications, and so that's really gonna be the driver of the question.
You'd be asking us for a bigger computer next.
Potentially, yeah. So just trying to move along here, so we also just kind of wanted to drill down into one particular area that we found interesting. So, and again, this is just an example. You could do this for other areas of the county as well, but just wanted to show this area southwest of, outside of the city limits. It includes the Deschutes River Woods subdivision as well as Inniseth Mountain, Woodie Creek. If you average that whole area that was drawn, not to really consider fuels as much as just overall risk, it includes a significant part of the lava flow as the Newbury National Monument. It ranks out as six point six, so again, with the rounding, it would rank out. If you take out the lava flow, it actually, you know, bumps it up again to seven point six five. So how fine a scale detail do you go to, do you take out this area that we know is not gonna be developed as part of a national monument and really focus on, you know, the other areas that actually have the fuels or not? So again, just kind of posing these as, here's all these different ways we can look at this. I don't necessarily have, you know, the, I'm not trying to provide your recommendation of this is how you should look at it, but there's lots of ways to skin the proverbial cat, I guess, so. So those are a few of the example maps that we came up with. We've talked about other maps, like I mentioned, fire districts. We talked about just dividing the county in quadrants by the two main transportation corridors, Highway ninety-seven and Highway twenty. We could go finer scale, although again, like I had said, the finer scale you go, the more computations you need to make. That takes, you know, that's gonna take some time to do, so we may not...
Who would, so we create a map and then who judges it or approves the map?
The board.
But, so the state of Oregon doesn't weigh in on our...
We just have to, you know, have a methodology that actually follows the administrative rule. So, and I don't know all the appeals processes or anything like that that might apply, but I mean, I would think, you know, I think there's interest on both sides, so we want to have an object, as objective as a process as we can as far, and we've tried to do that in at least obtaining the data, but there's some subjectivity in where you draw those lines. And so that's really kind of the direction that we'll probably be talking with you on the, and I'll sit down probably.
Thanks, Ed. If I can just offer a couple of other perspectives that were shared with us on May twenty-ninth, I think it was, by, we had about eighteen people, stakeholders that came from the fire districts, great to see them here. Koba was here, great to see Karna here as well. A couple of the other thoughts Ed mentioned is we should create one of a fire district map, just to give you another perspective there. Another idea was, should we create a map that shows like a one or two mile radius around each of our, each of our cities and maybe resorts and areas that are gonna have significantly higher concentrations and densities of people and structures, just to see what does that, does it make sense to think about hardening structures around the developed areas? Should we identify known or potential future significant development areas or new subdivisions? I mean, let's just, for example, Thornburg or another phase of Caldera Springs, is it helpful to identify where the, what might be more subject to these than others? Because Deschutes River Woods, even though it could rank out as a seven point six five, as Ed just showed, may not be subject to these new standards because it's over fifty percent built out. So we're wide open to what other landscape approaches the board might think about. Again, we're not asking for you, if you have any thoughts today, great, but if not, the most important thing is we just wanted to present the initial data and concepts to you as a starting point. Others have suggested it would be great if we had a work group of builders and fire officials to dive into this more, to provide more recommendations, a lot of thoughts about how we might move forward.
One thought is insurance companies, have they been participating in this already? I mean, I know that Project Wildfire has had insurance representation in the past, and I mean, that's the big picture, you know, public health and safety, obviously, but this is something proactive in support of if there's a wildfire activity and we're doing this, just the big picture, development standards.
Not to this point, but we, that would, you know, if the direction was to kind of pull together a work group to provide the board recommendations, that would be, you know, a sector that we probably would want to consider involving.
Is this significant nationally if you're starting to do this?
When we did invite in the work group that Nick was referring to, that was brought up as another kind of unrepresented sector that would probably have pretty great interest in this.
And this all hinges on being optional to participate in this whole section of code, correct?
Yeah, so, and I guess that's one thing I would mention, so, I mean, if the inclination of the board is you're not seeing this moving forward, we can skip to the end, I guess.
The sooner the better, yeah.
This gives you at least a basis. So what we didn't have for you before, when R three twenty-seven passed, is we had no idea what the map would look like with today's data. So now we're kind of bringing that here for a little bit of context, but, you know, there's lots of ways we could go about doing that that involve, you know, significant investment of time, depending on the path that you would direct. So, I mean, if the ultimate answer is we don't see this moving forward, then, you know, that's an answer too, but...
Yeah. Also, are there other efforts around the state along these lines or is Deschutes out there by ourselves?
My understanding is the other area in the state that's interested in doing this is southwest Oregon. So I know that Ashland has actually already, because they implemented some other codes based on the wildfire hazard zones, they actually already have a wildfire hazard zone within Ashland. They intend to implement this, is my understanding, if they haven't already.
Well, they were the leader at the state level. I mean, they really, they were the one pushing the state to do it statewide too, so they're way in front of a lot of people.
Then one more, I know that this was mentioned for accessory dwelling units, Senate Bill eighty-eight, they were, and just the fact that if that was gonna, that discussion was gonna start, this would probably be a required exercise or possibly.
Interesting, within the Senate bill as it was written, this, the direction from the legislature was then to create a statewide map like this in cooperation with Oregon State University, so I don't know that that's moving forward, though.
Yeah, but it was, it became a discussion item, yeah.
I think, Commissioner, I really appreciate that perspective because this map could serve multiple purposes. One would be R three twenty-seven, another could be accessory dwelling units, and a third could be the land use standards, or does there a wildfire zone or requirements for defensible space, things of that nature? So the map could have multiple purposes.
Yeah, right. Well, great, this has been a great discussion, it's a great start, you know, to explain how you're, some of the variables on these maps and what we need to look at. I noticed that it was on the agenda for next week and I'm not gonna be here. I'd really like to be here when we discuss this next, because I do have a lot of thoughts about it. I don't know if it's possible to move it to the following week, but that's, but I think I am kind of inclined towards a work group, but maybe after we get our next meeting done and talk about it. Because, yeah, that, we probably had to clarify whether, you know, it seems like maybe all of us will be interested in considering adopting this zone, but we need to know, I want to have some discussion about the, or this, not zone, but this new building code requirements, but I think we want to talk about that too and the impacts, because we kind of got into the tail end of the state rulemaking, and so they modified a few things, but they didn't modify, you know, everything we had, so that's another discussion too. But good, any other, great presentation and real interesting.
Thank you so much. Looking at this and knowing why we have so much red and, you know, the fact that insurance companies will be looking at this and building standards, I believe I'll never be able to have my Cape Cod house here in Deschutes County, it doesn't look like it's possible. Yeah, you really...
You can, but you have to do a cementatious siding that looks like shingles.
No, but that's not the same.
It's not really shingles. Well, one of the ones I built in Madras, that was the whole look, was a Cape Cod house, but we did it that way, so.
Well, anyway, I do believe that we need to do more work and people have to make choices, but we have to be very aware of the costs involved. So it is, you know, I can see, it was fascinating that Burgess Road down in Lapine, that area seems, you know, they're at the below five, six. So that's, that's very, I'm surprised, that was good, though, to know that we do have several spots. Redmond seems to be pretty safe, you know, as far as the numbers go, so that whole community. But you have to look at the history and yesterday spending it, walking up to the Pole Creek Fire and realizing how we have the west winds coming in. We have such, we have consideration that's always serious historical standards. Fires repeat themselves and we have to be aware, and people have to, especially new people to our community, have to be aware of what are the standards that they should, when they're buying a house, what they should think about, and thank you for doing all this work.
So thank you very much for those comments. One of the concepts that just came to mind is can this be affected as in efforts on the ground, forest management, fuel reduction, defensible space? And this will be for the future discussion, we need to get going now, but yeah, that's interesting, you know, because I think of the, you know, flat sandy forested area around Burgess Road in southern Deschutes County.
Right.
I mean, that's all parceled, but fuel reduction efforts on individual property lowers the fuel load.
Well, that's what I think will happen, is people will want to modify the wildfire hazard, the wildfire, whatever the other measurement was, to get below two, because you only have four points left after the weather, so.
And you've got the three to begin with, so, yeah, it's gonna be an effort. And I do want to congratulate the county for stepping up and actually going to our transfer stations up twenty percent from last year, so thank you. I think everyone realizes...
Fire-free.
Yeah, fire-free. It's, this is the time, you need to do it, and, you know, the Pole Creek Fire was September ninth, which is really after the, you know, the summer, everyone in the forestry was so shocked over that fire because they thought they'd kind of gotten through it. But that was also, you know, the Sisters Folk Festival Day, so we just have to be prepared.
Just one last thought, just for other folks that might be watching or listening in, is that just because you don't rank out, that wouldn't mean that I wouldn't recommend that people all have good defensible space. So, you know, if you're in that area around Lapine, the wildfires are still a risk, and, you know, we have, we have a significant wildfire season here every year, and so I don't want that to be misleading to folks that, oh, I'm, you know, I don't have to worry about this at all, so I just wanted to mention that, so.
Do any of the fire chiefs want to say anything? Comments, or are you just here to listen?
Couple hours of fun.
I would just support the direction that you're doing. I think it's prudent to continue to evaluate the mapping and, you know, some of the formulas or the, you know, the granular level that you get to with the mapping, I think would be a good policy decision to look at. And I agree with Ed's comments that our entire county has some level of risk, and trying to quantify where it's greater than others is gonna be a challenge, but we all have some level of risk. And I think, I think what we're seeing with fires in northern California, southern Oregon, a lot of these fires are spread through embers, and these embers are traveling and igniting fires within communities a mile, two miles away. So we think of continuity of fuels, we think of some of these things, and we have a tendency to look at real brushy areas, boy, that's a big risk. We have to think about flying embers, we have to think about fires moving long distances and, you know, what the impacts to communities are. So I appreciate the work and I appreciate the commissioners being willing and interested to at least look at the mapping and see where it falls.
Thanks. Okay, good. Thank you.
So we'll work with administration on a next meeting date to bring this back to you when you're available. Ed is out in a couple of weeks, so it may be early July, just to let everybody know, and we'll send an email to the stakeholders and everybody else to let them know what that next date is, and that actually gives us a bit more time to prepare some of these maps, given the computations, so.
Fire Wednesday.
That's great.
Yeah, you're still working on it.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. So Ed proposed we proceed through some of the budget things, maybe till twelve thirty or something, and if we don't get them all done, we can finish them up at one fif, what did we say, one fifteen? Is that what we're coming back, yeah? So our first item is the public hearing on the twenty-twenty Deschutes County Fee Schedule in Consideration of Resolution Number Two Thousand Nineteen Twenty-Five.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Chris Partain, County Finance Department, and Wayne Lowery, outgoing...
Smartie.
County Treasurer.
So I guess, do I need to open the hearing or do we need to talk about opening the hearing before we open it?
Just real quick, there are four hearings on here. Each of them is for a fee schedule for each of those districts and for the counties, so...
Right.
And actually, we have that.
But we, this one, we're still as county commissioners.
Right.
Yes.
So, so...
You just can open the hearing?
Okay, so, okay, so we'll open the hearing on the fiscal twenty-twenty Deschutes County Fee Schedule in Consideration of Resolution Two Thousand Nineteen Twenty-Five, and request the staff report on that.
Annually, Deschutes County reviews fees and charges for services for compatibility with actual cost of providing services, CPI increases, and ORS guidelines. We have discussed the proposed changes on May sixth, and then we continued the discussion on June third, and I believe we came to a consensus to move forward with the fees as presented today. We do have one amended new fee. Ben Parkin Recreation District informed us late last week that they had adopted a new fee for placement of a manufactured mobile home of seven thousand five hundred and three dollars. I provided you with that information earlier this week, so the fee schedule that we are hoping to adopt includes that fee.
It is in a mobile home park, right?
Yes. Or is it, Sherri, just in a mobile home park or on private land?
It says in park.
Okay.
It says in mobile home park.
And what was it before that?
It wasn't listed.
There was no fee.
New fee.
It's a new fee.
Seventy-five hundred dollar new fee on a mobile home?
Yes.
Single-family home rate probably applied to it prior to the lower rate for a manufactured home.
This is lower than single-family home?
It's lower. Yes, it is. Eighty-three.
But I think-
We're gonna be capturing anybody from the audience, so you might need to come up to the table.
Oh. What page is that on, do you know?
It was an extra little handout.
Yeah, I can give you a copy of the extra memo.
Oh, maybe I have the handout. I was, yeah, I have it. No, I've got it right. I'm sorry.
It was an extra memo in our box earlier today?
Yeah, Monday.
Oh, yeah, okay. So, I, I was able to remember to associate it, yeah.
Maybe I will take it. I thought it was, I thought it was in the handout today, and I hadn't seen it, but I realize that it's not, so, thanks. Yeah.
So, I think Tom was making the point that it may have been a single-family dwelling fee in the past, and now there's another one that's a little bit lower for manufactured home placement in a park. Is that correct?
That is possible.
We're not sure. Okay, that's fine. Yep.
Well, I'm quite sure that there was-
Passed through anyways.
It was an SDC for a manufactured home historically.
Yeah.
It wouldn't have absolved a builder of doing it. So, it seems pretty straightforward, but I don't know for sure that they, and I know the Parks and Rec District was going through a process to adjust their SDCs to provide a break to certain types of homes. So, it seems logical that they landed on this one as a little bit of a break for a manufactured home as opposed to a full stick-built residential property. All right. Then, I guess, to provide a little more context, we had the other changes where, we spent some time discussing the fees for planning, the CDD planning, and we kind of, that was one of the things we worked through, some of the health fees, environmental health, those were kind of the two other topics we got additional information on.
Right.
Any further summaries, or?
No, the, the fee schedule that we're presenting to you for adoption includes all changes that we discussed in those meetings. So, the main one being the increase in the environmental health fees.
And did we, didn't we also make a recommendation that after this, we were gonna look at those going forward, the environmental health, and kind of compare them with other areas? Wasn't that our kind of follow-up from, we're gonna go ahead and adopt the fees for this year as presented?
Yes, and, and starting this fall, possibly reviewing how those fees are determined and how they should be charged.
All right. Any questions, or do we just move forward with approval?
So, public hearing, call-in for public comment, but-
Oh, right, yeah. So, is there anyone here that wishes to comment on this fee proposal, schedule, proposed schedule? Seeing none, we can close the hearing and seek a motion approving this.
I'll move approval of the Deschutes County Fee Schedule by Resolution Number two thousand nineteen dash twenty-five for the year twenty-twenty.
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Thanks for all your hard work getting it done and, and answering all our questions. Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. So, now we'll, do we have to adjourn and then reconvene in this Black Butte?
Well, you don't have to adjourn. You could just convene-
Okay.
As the Black Butte Ranch.
So, we'll now convene as the governing body for the Black Butte Ranch County Service District, and we'll hold a public hearing on the Black Butte Ranch County Service District Fee Schedule in, in Consideration of Resolution Number two thousand nineteen dash zero-two-six. The staff will give a report on this.
Black Butte Ranch County Service District did not request any changes from their fiscal year twenty-nineteen fee schedule.
Is there anyone here today that wants to testify on this proposed fee schedule? Seeing no one, then we'll go ahead and close the hearing, unless you have, I guess, well, do you have any questions, commissioners?
No.
So, then we'll close the hearing and seek a approval, motion for this fee schedule.
I move we approve the proposed twenty-nine, twenty-twenty Black Butte Ranch Service District's fee schedule and for Resolution Number two zero one nine dash zero two six.
I'll second it.
Further discussion? Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Now, we'll convene as the Deschutes County nine-one-one County Service District Governing Body and consider Resolution Number two thousand nineteen dash zero-two-seven, the nine-one-one County Service District Fee Schedule. So, staff will give a report on that.
Deschutes County nine-one-one Service District did not request any changes from their fiscal year twenty-nineteen fee schedule.
Is there anyone here today that would like to be heard on the, this fee schedule for nine-one-one County Service District? Seeing no one, any comments, commissioners?
No.
Okay, seek a motion in support of this resolution?
So, I'll move fiscal year twenty-twenty Deschutes County nine-one-one County Service District Fee Schedule by Resolution Number two thousand nineteen dash zero twenty-seven.
I second it.
Okay, further discussion? Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Our final fee schedule is the, we'll convene as the governing body of the Extension four-H County Service District Governing Body and seek, which is approval of, or have a hearing on Resolution Number two thousand nineteen dash zero-two-eight, the four, Extension four-H County Service District Fee Schedule, and the staff will give a report on that.
Extension four-H County Service District did request two changes. They have an entire two fees on their schedule. For copy fees, we discussed these changes at the May sixth meeting. They're increasing those fees by two cents each.
They got one to pay back.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so this'll, it's a reference to the loan the county's made to the district to, so they're upping the fees, I guess. So, okay. Is there anyone, tenants would like to be heard on the Extension four-H County Service District Fee Schedule? Seeing no one, none? Any comments by commissioners?
No, they're going to do it.
Okay, I'll close, close the hearing. Were you looking for something, counsel?
Well, no, we're just gonna need to add an additional one when you're done. The agenda didn't pick up the Sun River Service District. It was noticed in the resolutions in your packet, but it didn't make its way onto the actual agenda.
I don't think it's in my packet.
Well, apparently the resolution made it to staff, but didn't make it to you.
Okay.
So, we'll have to get that.
Okay, you want, we could do it when we reconvene, or do you wanna?
I don't know if that's gonna be a convenience to these folks. You have it here.
Either way, yeah.
We have it here.
Let's finish, let's finish this one first. So, yeah. So, we'll close this hearing and I'd seek a memorandum, or a motion supporting Resolution two thousand nineteen dash twenty.
I move we accept the four-H County Service District Fee Schedule and for Resolution Number two zero one nine dash twenty-eight for the twenty-twenty fee schedule.
I'll second it.
Okay. And any further discussion? Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. I think technically it's the Extension four-H County Service Fee Schedule Districts. Anyway, good. Okay, so it's been brought to our attention. We have another resolution. This would be, we would convene as the governing body of the Sun River Service District, consider their Resolution two thousand nineteen dash twenty-nine, approving the fee resol, or fee schedule for the Sun River Service District. So, we'll open a hearing on that, and staff will give a report.
The Sun River Service District did request multiple fee changes for this fiscal year. We discussed those changes on the meeting May sixth. Their board adopted these changes in early May.
Okay, any questions, commissioners?
No, in support of the district.
Okay. Is anyone here today that wanted to testify with regard to the Sun River Service District Fee Schedule for two thousand twenty? Seeing no one, did you have any questions with regard to this?
No, I just know their financial person, Joe Healy, so I hope he did a good job.
Okay, good, good. So, I'll close the hearing and seek a motion supportive of Resolution two thousand nineteen dash twenty-nine.
I'll move fiscal year twenty-twenty Sun River Service District Fee Schedule by Resolution Number two thousand nineteen dash zero twenty-nine.
I'll second it.
Okay, Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
Thank you.
Please sit.
Thank you.
All right. So, we'll be, we'll adjourn and reconvene at one fifteen.
Here, or upstairs?
Finish our business. It's gonna be here, isn't it, the hearing on the land use stuff? Yep. Thank you. So, we're done. We'll reconvene the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for June twelfth, two thousand nineteen. The next item of business is a public hearing on the Community Development Department two thousand, is it the eighteen annual report or the nineteen?
Nineteen.
Yeah. Well, the annual report's for nineteen, isn't it? Okay. Well, it says eighteen. And draft fiscal year nineteen twenty work plan. And so, why don't you join us, Nick, and? If there's anybody here that wants to testify today at, on this, at this hearing, there's some blue forms up here on the table. Just fill that out and turn them into share, and we've got two requests to speak at this time. So, good, all right, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Nick LeLac, Deschutes County Community Development Director. I apologize for the confusion there. What we prepare every year is an, is a, is an annual report for the prior calendar year, and then a work plan for the next fiscal year. And so, so I apologize for the confusion on the title for the agenda item. My presentation is fairly short today. I do have copies of the draft work plan that the board is receiving public input on today. It's, there's copies of it on the table. I think everybody else that asked, that requested a copy has one now. So, I'm gonna just, at a very, very high level, summarize the work plan. If the board has any questions for me or for Community Development Department staff, I'm joined by Sherry Pinner, Angela Havner, Chris Gracia, and Peter Gatawski are all here from our department that can help answer questions. And I, I am gonna ask Chris to, to talk about one thing briefly. The public hearing, so the upper, I'm sorry.
So, should we open their hearing first, or?
Either way, you could open it, or you could do staff report and then open it.
Okay.
There's really no right or wrong.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll open it later.
The public hearing, and then the discussion for the board to talk about next steps. Do you, are you prepared to move forward and adopt it today, either as proposed or modified by the board, or at a subsequent meeting? I think it's always important to just emphasize how we arrived at the point that we're at today. In winter, January through March of each year, staff drafts the, the work plan, and it's always based on the Board of County Commissioners' goals and objectives that are set generally in January or early February, February each year. So, the Board of County Commissioners' priorities is the number one item that, that we look to. Any changes in state law that we need to be sure to address? If there are grant or funding sources for particular projects? Public comments, always extremely important. I think almost every year, there's a public suggestion, a public comment that comes in that, that is added or included in the work plan, and it may not be taken up that year, but it could be in a following year. And then carryover projects from the prior year. If, it's quite common that we have more projects in the work plan than we're able to initiate or undertake in any one year, and so we start with the next year's work plan with those projects included. But of course, it's a board decision on whether we keep those in the work plan or not. After staff drafts the work plan, we conduct work sessions and either public hearings or open houses, something of that nature, with Historic Landmarks Commission and the Planning Commission. This year, the Planning Commission held three open houses around the county. Those open houses were held in conjunction with a non-prime resource lands discussion. So, we were able to invite public comments around the county, rather than just in bend at, at one public hearing, or a couple of public hearings, which we often have. And then, with the Board of County Commissioners, we held a work session with you a couple of weeks ago on May twenty-first, and today is, is the board's public hearing on the draft work plan. As a, one of the big, one of the differences this year, and I have, you all have a copy of the work plan in front of you, but we, we separated the, the plan into two documents this year for the first time. One is an annual report. What did we accomplish in the calendar year twenty-eighteen? And then a separate document, the work plan for the next fiscal year. And I'll describe a little bit more about that in just a moment, the draft work plan. And I'm not gonna summarize anything in the annual report, other than just, here's a snapshot of, of, for example, applications processed over the past year. The board has seen this during the budget hearings a couple of weeks ago. And I just invite anybody that's interested in our annual report. It's on our webpage. We're happy to make a copy of, of it for you if you would like. It's on our front, front webpage. It's at the bottom of the webpage. There's a ton of statistics and data and charts, and what did we accomplish last year? How did we perform with our performance measures? There's a lot of information. We also have lots of photos. What were we engaged in? Everything from big public meetings to, to field work, staff in the office. We have, last year, one of our accomplishments was, was redesigning and then implementing the new front counter operations, the downstairs customer area where customers wait, we provide permitting services and whatnot. So, there's a lot in, in that document. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I was not planning to go into that in any more detail now. The next piece, and which is really the key driver for what we're gonna work on next year, there's always, of course, flexibility in the projects that we initiate. We coordinate with the board throughout the year on all of our projects, is the work plan. This is intended to be a user-friendly working document. So, without all the data and, and information from the prior year, this is, separating this into two documents, this is now intended to be a user-friendly working document. It summarizes our organization, services, resources to provide the services and the projects. It includes the Board of County Commissioners' goals and our performance measures. What are we striving, striving to hit this next year? And, as well as contact information. So, this is great for our customers as well. Who do I contact for the service that I need if they're not going online? So, it's a nice, it's a nice reference document as well. I, I'm not gonna go through these, these are some sample pages from the document. Colorful, it's, it's intended to be engaging, but it just gives you a high-level overview of that. Draft work plan, again, here, I'm just gonna give you the high-level overview of some of the, some of the projects and services. And I'm gonna ask Chris Gracia to talk about one. One of the, the ones that we have every year, maintain fast turnaround times for processing permit applications. But I think it's important for us to emphasize improving those turnaround times going forward this next year. That certainly came up in the budget hearings, and it'll be discussed again. Tom and I coordinated on, on that, about the steps we're going to take to improve those turnaround times. How, that's so important for our customers and our community to be able to, to move forward with projects throughout our, throughout our region. Updating the transportation system plan, this is, everybody experiences population growth, and certainly more vehicles on our, on our, all of our roads. So, updating the TSP is a, is a major effort, and that's gonna be a, a joint effort with Community Development and the Road Department. In two, back in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, it was really led by the Community Development Department with support from the Road Department. This year, it may be the other way around. But in any event, we, we will play a major role in that plan update. As well as the, the Tumalo and Terabon community plans regarding the transportation improvements there. The Board of Commissioners and Planning Commission have work sessions and hearings scheduled later this summer to begin to talk about the Terabon improvements. And then, probably not much beyond that, certainly we'll, we'll be talking about the Tumalo interchange, or roundabout, or whatever the, the preferred alternative is there. So, this is where I'm gonna ask Chris to, just to summarize this. Initiating a master electrical permit program for commercial and industrial construction. So, you're happy, I'm happy to have you, because it's, it's a great service. You can just come right up here.
Good afternoon. So, so basically, we have two, right now, we have two current businesses that, that use this master electrical program. One being Mount Bachelor, and the other one, Ben Lapine School Districts. And basically what it is, it's established an administrative rule that allows bigger companies, industrial, commercial companies to, it has a lot of, you know, maintenance issues that they, they do throughout the year, interior remodels, that kind of thing. It allows those companies to save a little bit on permit fees. They don't have the, the requirements to come in and get a permit for everything that they do. But what they do is they come- But what they do is they come in, they pay a nominal fee to get into the program, then they're electricians, and they tell us who's working on the projects and whatnot. And then they complete a log. Every time that they do some maintenance work, they fill out their log. And as long as it's not work that's being covered, they can keep track of all these projects. And then every few months, they contact us and they set up the inspection process with our A-level electrical inspectors. And it's kind of like, hey, we're doing this. When do you want to see it? But the gist is, every few months, we will go in and look at their log and we'll check the work that they've done and just make sure that it's up to speed. If it's more involved than that, or if it's work that's gonna be covered, then they call us out for those individual inspections. But they don't require individual permits for every little thing. So that's the gist of it. It does not include new construction. It's basically maintenance, interior tenant improvements. And like I say, it just helps them streamline their process and saves them a little bit of money.
Yeah. That's great.
Minor label's a different program, Tom, but it's along that same line, allowing minor stuff to be done. And the minor local program's done a little bit different. They get one out of 10 jobs, and they'll send us an inspection request for those. And I can go over those anytime you guys have questions about that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Just a few more highlights. A lot of potential code amendments. And just potential, these are not... Some of these are in process, others are just potential. Wildfire hazard mitigation. Signage. One of the issues that we need to do is work closely with legal counsel to bring our signage code into compliance with federal law. For example, we can't regulate content. Our current code does. So there's just some tweaks there that we need to make sure that we're in compliance with federal law. We don't administer the parts that don't comply today, and this is common throughout the country. So we need to make sure that's compliant. Marijuana uses. We have hearings coming up later this summer. Flood planes, religious uses, similar to signage. We need to make sure that we're in compliance with federal law. Childcare facilities. The board approved a very, very important text amendment this last year in the Sun River Business Park, but we think that there may be other opportunities to improve our permitting processes for childcare facilities around the county. And then whatever some of the outcomes may be of this 2019 legislative session, and of course, the 2020 legislative session as well, which is scheduled for next February. Coordinating with Bend and Redmond on the UGB expansions for the new affordable neighborhoods. These are the pilot projects approved by the state. That'll be very important for us to coordinate on. And supporting other housing initiatives. I could've just put affordable, but I think it's all housing initiatives of the need to increase housing supply throughout the county. Coordinating with Bend and DEQ on the transition from septic to sewer. There's a... With the photo there on the bottom right is Todd Cleveland on a site visit we conducted in southeast Bend last year. And that's what one of those sites actually looks like. Updating our code enforcement policy and procedures manual. Implementing the county's comprehensive plan to ensure agricultural lands are correctly designated. We could call that non-prime resource lands. We could call that all kinds of things. But the map there depicts the example that we currently experience and are subject to hearings right now. In fact, another one tomorrow night in this room. And then developing departmental permitting response plan, a departmental permitting response plan in the event of a major disaster, something we talked about yesterday. There's a lot more in the draft work plan. I could have... We could all speak to this for hours, as you well know, but we're not. I'm gonna keep it short. The next steps would be, again, for the board to deliberate and adopt today as proposed or as modified by the board. You may choose to close the written and oral records today and deliberate and adopt in the next couple of weeks, or keep the written record open for a period of time and then deliberate later this month. So as you see fit, we'll be happy to execute your direction. And that completes my comments.
So for clarity, is it a proposal to adopt the annual report also, or just the work plan?
I think it's the board's choice.
We're gonna mix them together.
Sure.
Okay, yeah. So if we wanna... Dave, if we wanna ask questions of Nick, should we do it now or in the context of the hearing, or...?
If it's gonna get in this level of depth, I'd open the hearing.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to ask a few questions on the work plan from the plan itself.
Great. I'm gonna grab my copy right up here.
So at this time, we'll open the hearing on the 2019-20 Community Development Department work plan and annual goals. We'll have a chance here to ask some questions of Community Development Department and then oral... Any testimony from anyone who wants to testify today. We've got two slips of these. If anybody wants to still testify, just fill out one of the blue forms that are over here and give it to Sharon, and we'll give you a chance to speak on the work plan or the annual report. So thanks, Nick, for the presentation. Really good. I really liked the... Just wanna say, the format of the work plan. I don't know who did the layout. It seems like it's different than before, but just it's easy to find stuff. So that was really good. Particularly, I had some questions on some of the performance measures. So just kind of reconfirming, I know we had a work session where we talked about some of this. But so the first one's on page 12. Is the first item there is, "Complete the single-family dwelling permit process from application except is ready to issue in 30 days." I thought we were saying that that was more than we really wanted to be doing it at. Wasn't that the one that we were at 28 and we decided we actually should add somebody or at least temporarily to help you reduce that? So that... Is that the normal goal, a new goal, or what?
That's... Thank you, Commissioner. That's a really good question. And certainly, if anybody wants to join me, you're welcome to. But the performance measure we really wanted to improve is the building plan turnaround time. And this is the time that our plan reviewers have it on their desk. And by state law, they need to complete the building plan review turnaround time.
And we'll get to that. It's further in.
Yeah, which is 10 days, and so our goal is five days. But there's so much more that goes into reviewing a building permit. It comes in, it's assigned, not just to the building department, it may go to planning...
This is the full length.
This is the full length of time.
And you're... The other one, I think, is about structural building.
Exactly.
Find that. And that's the one that we were saying was too slow now for what we're trying... You're trying to get to. Let's see.
Exactly. That's a great question.
I had it underlined, I think. I'm not sure which page that one's on. Twenty-one.
Page 21?
Okay.
Oh, with the...
Well, that's a building plan review. Is that it? I thought there was a five-day one. Is that the one that... I thought there's another one on structural or something.
Yeah, you're right.
That's close.
You're right, 'cause that should've been... That one should've been...
It's been five days in the past.
So I think what we have going on is we have the same performance measure... I'm sorry, I'm losing my words. So we have the same performance measure, and we talk about it in a couple of different terms. So one view that you saw last week, which was the metric sheet that has all the red and green, yellow, go stop, made it. That, we talk about it from being from two to 10 days with a goal of five. And here, we talk about it just being less than 10.
Which is statutory.
Which is, yes, which is statutory.
Oh, okay.
Does that make sense? So I think...
Yeah, I think that... I just wanted to make sure we hadn't backtracked on what we're trying to do. Oh, here... I know what I was thinking on page 16. Establish and monitor a new performance measure. The target number days for structural permit ready to issue turnaround time coordinated services of four days. So what is that one?
Angie, do you wanna address that?
That would be after...
On the mic of whom?
So after the plans examiners have the plan that we want to meet the 10 days or less, it goes back to a permit tech for streamlining, for fees invoicing. They make sure that the driveway access has been done, the environmental soils, the complete package. So we're hoping that that would be the four days or less with the permit tech before it's ready to issue.
That's where you've got... That's the last step, so you can...
Yes.
That's where we put in the forms and get ready to pour the concrete. We'll wait for that permit.
So that would be the process that comes in is that they'll submit their permit. It will either go to planning, then plan review, which is the 10 days or less we hope to get it out. And then from that, once planning signs off, the plan review is done, then it goes back to the permit tech for all the pieces that need to be fit together before we can issue.
So any reason... So these are on three different sets of performance measures. It seems like they're all connected. So maybe put them all in the same place would be my only suggestion, but...
Yeah, the...
It's hard to figure out what all these were, but if... Builder... I do get calls from people if they're, you know, the timelines and stuff, and so it'd be good to know kind of what to tell them the goals are, and that's good. Okay.
That's great.
Does that make... You know what I'm saying? I mean...
Many, many pieces of one whole. Yeah.
And then the other question on 16 was, "Provide community training opportunities for online application submission to obtain a goal of 30% of applications submitted conducted online." So what are we at now of applications online?
Twenty-seven point five.
Yeah. And that's the one where I still think I can tell a whole generation of builders are gone. There's a lot of people that don't want to do it online, but... Okay. Questions? Mr. DeBob? Comments?
Not at this time.
Okay. Mr. Dare?
Okay. What were we talking about when we were worried about the 28 days? Which one of those was actually at 28 when we were looking before? Because we had said we should get another person for the department?
Good question. That was the 10 days, which was on page...
Page 21.
Page 21.
Twenty-one.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
So we definitely have a big room to improve there.
Yes.
The other thing that... Oh, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, since you're gonna see it coming up at budgeted option on June 26, the solution that we've come up with is to, which has been done once before... Maybe you could describe it, Nick. But it involves adding an additional FTE to the CDD's FY20 budget. And we'll make that, you know, if you concur with that recommendation, we'll make that change at adoption two weeks from today. But you can go ahead and explain what the fix is, both interim, immediately, and then longer term.
So the solution to that for the 10 days or less is we're trying to get an FTE for an additional plans examiner. And that would cut down that 10-day turnaround time from now to 21.
And our plan is to recruit, post that internally. We have a permit technician, and maybe a couple, but certainly one, that is well-suited for this in short order. She's already planning to take her certification exams and the other required exams over the next two to four weeks, two to six weeks, excuse me, so that she would be ready to hit the ground running in short order. And then we would backfill the permit, her permit technician position.
Do you believe that the knowledge of hiring internally will cut down on the training time for this new role? They are well-educated in a holistic picture of how we process permits. So that's the hope, that the training will be less, which will get our plan review time down to the goal of 10 days or less. Excellent. Yeah. I know. We have to make it a positive, timely experience, so thank you so much for realizing that internally that probably undoubtedly will be faster. Absolutely. So great idea. Absolutely. Thank you.
It worked out extremely well, and we've done it before.
Okay.
It's really been terrific. The permit tech moved into a plans, a building inspector one position, and then quickly passed all the certification. It is a three now and operating at a very high level. It's been very successful.
I was talking to one of the northern counties... I think it was Wasco County at AOC this week, and they're taking back over, I think it's building inspections and stuff, and they're just having so many challenges and they're not anxious to do it all. And it's like, well, I'd say the problem is, you know, you just... So we're lucky to have what we have with our ability to do the inspections. And I think one of the things that's most appreciated is the ability to do the inspections the day after they're called in, or, as I often do it in the middle of the night, when I call them, and they'd still show up that day. So that's a good... Couple other questions in terms of the plan. I... We... When we talked a little bit about the transportation plan with Chris Doty, and he kind of informed us that he was gonna hire a consultant to do it, and I don't mind involving a consultant, but I really wanted... I hope we're... It's really meeting what local people want to do and where we think we're going. And I'm really... That stat in the annual report that shows the expected growth of the... I think it's in here. You know, I really question if the growth is gonna be as much as what Portland State says in the next 50 years, but if it is, I just... Yeah, it's in page nine of the work plan. I mean, it shows a doubling, more than doubling by 2060, you know, which is only 40 years. That just... That's a huge number of people on our roads, and as Ben's gotten so much. So I really think that's important. I still think there'll be an infrastructure plan from the federal government. Maybe it'll be after the next election, because apparently the two parties don't want to work together and let the other one get credit. But both parties... It's in both parties' interest to have one, if you don't mind the deficit financing. So I think us being ready for things would be... I think that's a priority to me, so...
It's a no?
Well, that's where it's locked up. Yeah, well, last week, the president and the House leaders had tried to meet on it, but right before that, you know, the House leader criticized the president, so the president called off the conference. And I think nobody wants to go forward with the infrastructure at this point. I mean, I think they both want to, but they don't want to give, my impression, the other people the benefit of the win, so to speak. So seems to be the big policy issue in Washington.
Congressman Walden was on the news this morning, so talking about a different issue, but...
No, was he? Yeah. I'll just... Yeah, Tom?
Oh, I had a follow-up question, Commissioner, on the TSP. On page 27 of the work plan under transportation, second bullet down, it says that you'll initiate the TSP if it's funded by the state. I mean, is that... Is it contingent on that, or would we do it one way or the other?
Yeah, thank you, Tom. I think that is a correction we need to make. I understand that Chris Doty, Road Department Director now, is committed to initiating it this year. So this was a carryover from last year, and since we drafted this in the winter, I understand that he has made the commitment to initiate this. So that's a great correction to make. Thank you.
Yeah, good, yeah. Because even if they didn't, it'd be worth it to do it, I think, with the opportunity and with the growth we're facing, so... Any other comments, Commissioner DeBob? DeBonne?
Just in transportation, you know, Ben's doing their transportation system plan, the MPO's doing a metropolitan plan, COIC's doing a transit plan, so it's kind of time for the whole cycle of planning updates. So it's, it's the right time to be doing it.
You know, that's a good point, you know, that, so the city does their updates, and they have this big mass committee that apparently goes its own direction, maybe different than what the councilors want, or that's what it looks like in the press. I, I think it'd be good to have some kind of advisory committee, but I don't want, I mean, with some certain, you know, goals or objectives with it, that, so we make sure that people that live in different parts of the county, that know those roads, are giving feedback. Not, I, when I heard from Chris, was all this data-based driving it, and, you know, that's great, but I, then there's the people that actually drive the roads and tell you, well, here's the problem with that, and I, it's all worth, you know, what it's, it's worth, but it's, I, I, so I'd like to actually do something, not twenty-seven people, and not go where they want, and not, you know, dominated by people that want to change every, the mode of, but more look at the needs of what are current people and people that are coming, needed to have in the county. So I think that'd be an interesting idea that I, if Chris isn't open to it, I'd hope you would be, and we'll talk about it further, but.
Absolutely. Peter and I have talked about that as well, with updating the comprehensive plan in a couple of years. It's a whole new world of public engagement, and we really, really need to engage residents, like we did in Sisters Country, in a conversation in smaller groups. We have the larger meetings, maybe there's a steering committee, and I think it's incumbent upon myself and Chris together to, to make sure that the Board of Commissioners fully supports the, the, the plan to plan, the scope of how we're going to go about it, because there is the data point, but there's also the public involvement point that is so critical to supporting what the ultimate outcome of it is. So I think it's, it's important for us to get to you and, and present what that scope is at the start exactly, before we, before we hit the go button on anything.
And not necessarily start with a, this is where we want to go, which is how I kind of feel a little bit with the refinement plans from the ODOT, is that they have their way, and there's like, can they get the locals to go along with it or whatever? I, locals have them proactively.
I do have something to bring up, because I just did get a certified letter from Tennessee again. Remember the people that own the lots in South County that were incorrectly surveyed from decades ago?
Yes.
Okay. On page twenty-seven, you do say amend county code to define when, is it replating is required? Is, I mean, is, are we, is the county gonna do something to overcome that deficiency that's sitting out there for people that own property in Deschutes County? Because they seem to be very, you know, they've tried all kinds of venues, and I feel like, sitting here, maybe I can do something to help?
Yes. Commissioner Dare, for the record, Peter Gatazki, Deschutes County Planning, you're referring to Lechner Estates. Is it, is it not Lechner Estates?
I believe so.
No, it's similar.
It's a similar issue, and I could point out that legal's been involved in that of late. We've had multiple conversations with cartography, with the county surveyor. Really, the, the one you're referring to, Commissioner Dare, is a private matter. There's a path forward through property line adjustments and/or quiet title. These are private survey findings that title companies and people selling real estate to one another relied upon that may or may not have been accurate. And if, if the county were to, I don't know that the county could go down that path, but if you did, you'd be talking thousands of parcels, not the one or two that that particular person that keeps writing the letter wants. Yeah.
Three and they're selling.
So just, we have been involved in that to a certain extent, and it's, it's unfortunate, but typically those are addressed through issues with your title company and/or your neighbor, and or, and/or a property line adjustment process. But, I don't know, I, Peter, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, no. I, I, clearly, I, I was thinking more of the global perspective of Lechner Estates.
Some of the same issues.
But it's, it is difficult for the county to intervene, as Dave noted, just the legalities of it in terms of how you, I think ultimately, who pays for these, these surveys, and you need property owner consent, and there's, outside of the three that you're referring to, I was thinking of the area that's in the region. I mean, it's, it's, it would take every property owner to consent and, for that legal description, and, and you have some, some of those structures transcend property lines, so it's, it is a nebulous issue that has, you know, been discussed for years. And if there's, if there was an easy fix, I think we would have, we would have identified it and executed it, and unfortunately, there's just so many moving parts with the property owners and, and the way that structures have been, been built over time.
Okay. So, so Dave, then, you're saying that there are some.
Yeah, well, certainly Greg Rossi with the cartography, and Mike Perry in his last week or two here before he heads out the door into retirement.
Right, exactly.
We've been coordinating, Commissioner DeBonne has asked us to look into the, the folks that have been writing you folks the letters. It, it is a microcosm of the macrocosm that Peter's referring to, where we have these rural parcels that had some defective, incomplete, whatever term you want to use, surveys, and then a multitude of private land transactions based on those surveys and those legal descriptions that we now know are not correct. And folks are getting tied up, well, now I can't transfer my property because there's issues with regard to my description. What do I actually own? What am I actually able to convey? And, you know, that involves, again, typically a series of property line adjustments, and, and you can't always make your neighbor cooperate. And if your neighbor doesn't want to cooperate, you can't always make them cooperate.
If I, I could add to that, James has put together some information, our property manager, on this particular issue also, and it appears it only affects about six or seven parcels along the river. So as Peter said, they, they would all have to agree, and then it's, it's funding a new survey. The pins were put in the wrong place, frankly, back when, and people have relied on those over the years. Not all those properties are developed, so that makes it a little bit easier, but all the property owners would have to agree to basically a, a new survey, and the removal of the old ones and the placement of correct pins on the ground, you know, that ties to the recorded survey, so that they're, you know, everybody's, you know, operating off the same sheet of music, so forth. So Lechner Estates is a different issue. That one's huge. That's the biggest one in the county, where an old sixty-year-old survey was done in the wrong place, and then has then developed. So you got properties, you know, people occupying half of their neighbors' recorded property all over the place. So that one's a much, much bigger, more complex issue. The one on the river, you know, it should be simpler, as long as all the property owners agree. And then there's the question of paying for the work that's done, you know, should the county pay for a private, basically, to fix a, a private problem is really the question that we'd have to wrestle with.
And a few years ago, as Tom certainly remembers, the county removed one of the biggest obstacles that they had to even a solution, because previously county code only allowed lot line adjustments for individual properties, and we amended county code to allow it to happen to wholesale subdivisions, so that they could come through. Should they all agree, it can all be done at one time rather than piecemeal. So that was a big obstacle that we removed a few years ago. Great question. And just so that I don't lose sight on this, Chair Henderson mentioned the design of this. I have to give credit where credit's due. Kyle Collins, our assistant planner, he has an undergraduate degree in design, and he worked very closely with Whitney, and together, and they both really enjoy this. They, you know, from making it user-friendly and the attractiveness and usefulness of it, they both contributed to it in-house. We're very, very lucky to have, and fortunate to have that in-house expertise.
Thanks. Any other questions before we take testimony? Okay, well, thanks all of you for kind of giving us an outline on it. We'll now move to public testimony. On the 2019-20 work plan and annual report for community development, a request by two people to speak. If anyone else wants to speak, we need to fill out a blue form up here and turn it into Sharon, and so we'll get it. First will be Lindsay Pate, and then Mike Hayes.
For the record, my name is Lindsay Pate. I'm sure you guys know me. I've emailed a couple times. I'm an owner and operator of a craft cannabis business in Terribon, Oregon. My family and our property have been approved for both production and processing. I'm also the president of a business advocacy group called Cascade Cannabis Association, and you might be familiar with our old name, which is Cas, or Celebrate Cannabis. I'll try to keep it brief, because I understand that this particular hearing is in regard to the fiscal year, so I'm gonna try to keep this pretty broad. As all, and actually, I should just put this out there. I apologize. I always get really nervous up here, and it makes it a lot harder, because I'm not really feeling like I'm being listened to, unfortunately. So it makes it very hard for me to come up here. I know that I've sent multiple emails, probably in the last eight months, to all of you. Commissioner DeBonne, I'm really appreciative. I know you and I have been able to have some dialogue, but that wasn't in 2019. My main concern is that we're not being treated equally. We're not being heard. And the way that these land use applications are rolling out, it's not really feeling like there is a consistent burden of proof that we need to stick to. It's feeling like there's kind of a moving target, unfortunately. And it's really the duty of the county to provide very clear standards for the burden of proof, so that the applicant can execute that and not make investments into letters from engineers and, and fees and such, if the applications are just gonna get denied anyways. We had a couple other folks who were trying to come today, and because of the schedule changes, they weren't able to make this. So one of my big requests is to keep your open record period open long enough for some of those folks to be able to speak. I would like to read something that Stephanie Marshall wrote for me to read to you. She said, "The county has indicated that it may re-adopt the same regulations that were appealed in Luba and then withdrawn by the county, instead of defending those regulations. With this redo, the county has an opportunity to address many issues raised by the petitioners, to come up with regulations that are actually reasonable and supported by facts. The marijuana, the marijuana report prepared by the community development department at the commissioner's request shows no issues were identified with respect to the permitted operations. There's no basis for increasing the regulation of marijuana. The commissioners should listen to all of their constituents, particularly those that are the most impacted by regulations, which is the cannabis industry in the first place." So I went ahead and submitted some testimony that we submitted to all of you back, I believe it was October 2018. I made some changes in the language, so that it was more relevant to what we're talking about here and now. But if we are talking about using that as the basis for proposed code moving forward, I am incredibly concerned. I am not alone in that. And, you know, I am your constituent, all three of you. And I'm not feeling that way. My industry has asked me to serve as a community advocate and a leader, and I'm not sure that I'm being taken seriously in that respect either. So I really hope to have some dialogue. I don't bite, I don't smell too bad, so you know where I am, you know how to get ahold of me. And I, I also try to be incredibly tactful and respectful with how I communicate. So, you know, don't hold back on, on reaching out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay.
I wanted to say a couple things. So actually, I notice when you send things, and, and I don't necessarily respond to them, but we, we notice them. You've testified in, in a number of hearings. Recently, we've gotten a couple of emails we can't respond to, because they're on specific things that were already past the hearing stage, so we can't do that. But I, I think actually you are listened to, because you're consistent, you're fair, and you're, you're reasonable, I think, in terms of what you say. But we are gonna, if you're asking, are we gonna do, we are gonna redo, have new hearings on the regulations that were passed last year, not necessarily, as we said when Stephanie, not Stephanie Marshall, but Jennifer Lipton came out and talked about how we were drawing them back, because we were afraid to have them, or whatever. It was really to, to reopen the record for additional testimony. You'll have a chance to testify about those then, so, but.
Well, and.
So you'll get a chance to visit about the reg, that's the new regulations that were passed in October, or whatever it was.
And respectfully, we did submit testimony, many of the people in my industry did, and the, the code that was put to Luba was not appropriate in our opinions. And I know that that's subjective. I know that we're biased in this, but we are your constituents. We do deserve to be listened to, and it's one thing to not answer an email because the record is closed, but, I mean, big picture, it's not inappropriate to have a conversation. So I look forward to that, like I said. Thank you.
Mike Hayes, for the record. I'll keep it short, because there is a time and place to discuss the marijuana. But what I wanted to address, and what I was thinking about as I was coming in from Sisters and, and passing all the new hemp farms, is that there are a hundred and fifty registered hemp farms now in Deschutes County. Talking to tunnel irrigation, it's gone from three hundred acres to two thousand acres of hemp. And I'd really like for us to, as a county, decipher what we're talking about when we talk about marijuana, because I, I'll be at dinner parties, and I hear people concerned about marijuana, but, and it's not marijuana, it's hemp that they're concerned about, the smell. And I, I just hope in our planning that we address it in four different categories, and if I could, it would be OLCC, hemp, the medical market, and the black market, and how we act in those code violations in those specific categories. It, we've, we're growing to the point where we need to look at what we're doing and say, this is the problem area, or this is a problem. But when you group us all together, it's confusing, and it's confusing to the, to the public. That's all I have.
When you say group us together, do you mean in our planning, or?
Right. When you say marijuana code, a lot of people, they, they group hemp and marijuana together, because they don't understand the difference. They think hemp smells different than, than marijuana. They think the medical grows that are in their backyard are licensed by OLCC, and they're not. And we need to do a better job as a county to educate the public of what's going on and what's, because they're only gonna take headline news, and they don't really understand, you know, the, the board and myself and others really do understand what's going on, but the general public doesn't. So when we talk about it, or we say, we're gonna discuss marijuana code, what are we really talking about? And I just think we just need to define that and be more definitive, so.
Yeah, that's a good point. It is complicated to most people, because it's, it was complicated to us when we met with all the different departments that regulate everything, and so it is for people that aren't listening to it.
Yeah, I can only imagine. I know Patty and I live in the same city, Sisters, and when we drive in from Sisters, there's all these hemp farms being prepared. And last year, I would watch people pull over and take pictures, and I can only imagine they were going into code violations when they were just hemp, you know, farms. So, you know, it's, yeah, I'm sure you got them. And I would just chuckle, because I knew what they were, what they were doing. So anyways, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So any other testimony for today's hearing? Okay. So I guess we can close the, do you want to add anything, Nick, or any questions by commissioners?
No, no, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just here to help the, the board decide what next steps you'd like to, to take.
Well, so, you know, taking a look back at last year and laying out what we think we're gonna do in the next few years and how we're gonna measure it, it's just a wonderful tool. Being able to look back, you know, if a citizen comes here, or somebody wants to develop a parcel, if they're a builder moving to the area, this is lays, kind of puts the lay of the land out there for what's going on. So I just want to thank you for both work products, and just flipping through, and it's very digestible, flipping through the pages. So it is a great design, how it lays out. So we just had some testimony on, you know, the work plan, and it's kind of those, those code, proposed code amendments or changes or applications and things that might get appealed. So this is land use in Deschutes County. That's all I can say.
Mr. Dare, any comments or questions?
No, I just want to thank Nick for always taking my calls immediately, and then I heard about Peter responding to someone in five minutes at nine oh five PM. You know, our residents are pleased how responsive your team is, and I, very, very appreciative. So thank you for always going beyond. I, and we're still waiting on eighty-eight, aren't we?
I'll, I'll be happy to check as soon as this meeting's over.
Please check, let me know.
Thank you. I sure will.
We, we need some good news, don't we?
We do.
So thank you.
Thank you. So I guess the next question is, do we want, we can close the hearing, which I guess I'll do at this point. And then the next question is, we've had a request to leave the record open for written statements. I guess I'm not sure what the will of the board is on that. I'm not sure.
I support communication. You know, this is a proposed work plan. It's a, a product, and, I mean, I don't know that, you know, a comment is gonna really change the format of this document at this point in time. I mean, I'm showing support for the communication. Yeah. I don't want to be controversial about it, but I just don't know, you know.
I, I should, same thing. I'm, I wanted to look at the communication, interested in that, but I don't know if it's gonna alter what's in the work plan specifically, for the annual report. But on the other hand, it doesn't have to be adopted today, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, if it ends up at another board meeting on the consent agenda, maybe that's a path, you know, because then there's an opportunity for, and, you know, and then to find out, maybe there is a structural line item, page, something, something that is proposed to be changed. That would change the direction a little bit.
Well, I mean, what would be reasonable a few days to leave it open? Ms. Pate, you, you mentioned some people you knew might, would want to write some things in. Do you have an idea of how far out that would be time-wise? We could, the other possibility would be we could leave the, is there any rules here about how long we can leave the record on, open up for, or?
Well, this is sort of a hybrid. It's, it's not a quasi-judicial. There's no mandate to hold the record open. It, I'd like.
I mean, if, if we did get any other comments in, in the next twenty-four hours, we could finalize this on Friday when we meet on that. We have another matter we're meeting on Friday.
Sure.
We could finalize the vote on that.
You'd absolutely do that, yes.
That, that would be reasonable, and we have it wrapped up this week. Okay. So we'll, we'll leave the, so my proposal would be to leave the record open until five o'clock tomorrow. Is that sound reasonable?
Very good.
And then reconvene on Friday at. And then reconvene on Friday at 9:00.
9:00 and reconvene at 9:00 on this matter. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Good. Thank you. And I did, Mr. Pay, I did re, we did receive your email with comments today, so thank you.
So why don't I just give you my cell phone number? Does I get them open, or is this closed?
Yeah, yeah. Well, the meetings took going on, but you can give a phone, no, you can give a phone number.
Tell it to the world.
But thank you for leaving that open. We appreciate it.
Yep, thanks. So that concludes our work agenda through action items. The next, there's a couple of things we could finish here before we go to, we've got executive position at what time? 4:15, so it's only two now. So we could do more commissioner updates. I'd like to hear about Commissioner Adair's trip to the woods and what that was about yesterday. Do you want to hear about it? I'm interested to hear what they did and what, I've heard the tidbit, but give us a report on your...
You mean the fact that my first cousin was the regional director?
We've heard that part. We've heard that a couple of times. Her name's Graybill, we know that. She was assistant forester. I'm not sure where she went to college, but I'm pretty sure she's a distant cousin, or a close cousin. First cousin, all right. Stanford, that's right. Eric was paying more attention than I was about your family education.
And she got her forest degree from Colorado State. So anyway, that was nice to know because I got to bring Joe back with me. So that was number one thing I found out, bringing Joe back. He had to write in my... So the interesting thing was, yesterday, I found fascinating, so many of the public officials that signed up to do that canceled. And I thought that was really, personally, I thought that was disappointing. Several people canceled, and they had made huge plans. There were, of course, a lot of foresters there, and there was, there were a few. But, and then Mayor Russell had to leave. She just was there for the initial introduction to what we were doing.
So that was done for public officials?
Well, yes. They'd invited, Mayor Endicott was invited, Chrisana Endicott was one of the...
Well, I was invited. I mean, that was probably on the list.
But no, these were people that said they were coming.
Yeah, yeah.
And then Judge Crawford was on the list. And I think there were a couple of other people that didn't actually, that canceled at the last. So that's one thing. But we had an introduction, and it was all about this fire that was so out of the norm.
Remind me the facts. Was it, how many years ago was the fire?
2012, September 9th. It started early in the morning. There was a thin, thin piece of smoke heading up.
And where was it? Where is it?
Well, it was up at the, what is the park? It's the park at the top of the, by the trailer. Yeah, southwest, it's southwest. It was above the Millie Fire, where the Millie Fire was.
Above, meaning higher in elevation, and was it the one that was further south, too, or?
It was pretty south, yes. It was south. So it was, everyone, it's, you know, like, people are out of town, all these foresters. Somebody's over in Corvallis that should have been here. I think a DJ was actually the forester in charge. He's making breakfast for his kids. The man who spoke to us, I think Dave Robertson, was, I think it's his 25th year now. But he's a long-term forester fighting, you know, he's done it all, and he's moved up, doing it all. So he's closest to the situation. Now, everyone thinks because they're through August that they're gonna be okay. You know, when you're through August, you think...
See, I don't get that, though. Maybe in 2012 they thought that, but the last few years you have all these fires.
Yeah, and they've realized that they've had to rethink how...
The fire's still dry, the forest is still dry.
They have to rethink the teams. You know, they usually used to get college kids, train them, and they'd be there, and then they go back to school, so they lose their teams. So they're happy to reevaluate the whole team structure of who's actually gonna help fight the fires. Okay, so it's, the winds are up to 35 miles an hour. It's a red flag warning that morning, which is already that morning, it's windy. You know, usually it comes in about 4:00 in the afternoon from the west, but it's already windy up high. It's not windy down low. So Dave, the man who lives in Sisters, said, "Oh, yeah, I can run up there." He was at the Folk Festival. He goes, "No problem." So he goes back, gets in somebody else's truck, and heads up there. Now, he gets to the Polk Creek campground parking lot. There are 17 cars there. And he's like figuring, "Oh, my gosh, there's at least 30 to 50 people that are out hiking." And thank goodness it wasn't Labor Day weekend, or there could have been like 300 people out hiking. So he sees all these cars, but he sees the smoke is still up the hill, and he knows the area so well. So when we actually leave the ranger station and we go, we make a stop down below, which gives you kind of the perspective of the area. And they could only see it from Hinkley Butte. You couldn't see the smoke from Black Butte. So the Hinkley Butte report came in, "Oh, there's a little smoke." You know, like, it's not really a big deal. So Dave, we go there, we're, let's see, we stop there, and then we go on up to the campground where all the cars are, and we get the feel for that. And then we drive on up to actually where the fire started. Now, he knew approximately where it was, and it's so amazing, but right there, you can Google it, you can see wilderness. You know, and it's all green, and it's Google. But there's actually a stake in the ground that you can see, a little plaque that says wilderness area on the other side of where the fire started. And yet Ian explained to the group and me that you can actually take tools, you can get permission, you can do things, even if it is in the wilderness. It's possible.
Well, tools is one thing. It's machines. Well, yeah, they tell you they can, but the reality is they don't most of the time. They have to get certain permissions.
But Glenn has given permission. Last year, Glenn, it has to come a lot of times from regional, and Glenn did give permission for last year's fire. So they're hoping Glenn is gonna have a better, you know, outlook on what really needs to be done. So he gets to, he goes up the road, and then he drives by it, flips a U, comes back down, parks somebody else's pickup, and it's just a thicket of trees. And he's going, "Okay, I know it's up there." So he kind of winds his way through the thicket, gets to it, and it's really pretty teeny. It's like the small, teeny fire, but, and there's just so much brush down where it is, and it's really small. So he calls it in. He's like, "It's really small." He thinks there's going to be 10 smoke jumpers coming in. Now, the smoke jumpers come overhead. They set out their streamers, and the streamers' messages were all such that it wasn't safe for them to drop. So they can't drop. He's sitting there with a, I don't know, I don't know if it was a shovel. I don't think it was a shovel. It was just like hardly anything. And he's standing there, and he's talking on the phone, and he's not really analyzing the situation very well, and it's getting worse. And he's on the phone, and he's talking to everybody, and he's saying, "Yeah, you know, I don't think one person, I'm not gonna get the jumpers in. I don't, I think it's gonna go really. This is, I can't do anything." So finally, he realizes that it's starting to just spread down the hill. And it took him a while to understand that he had to get out of there as fast as possible. And he's going through, and it's, it's, you know, and there's all these like embers that are going ahead of him, and he's trying to get through the trees, and it is a thicket. If you see the picture that they gave on the email, it's a thicket. So fortunately, he does get through, and then he sees, he comes out, like, almost at the pickup. He can't believe it. And he's, because he's thinking he's gonna burn up his friend's pickup in there. He's gonna melt, and the pickup's gonna be burned up, and his name is gonna be mine forever. So he jumps in the pick, he throws his tool in the back, jumps in the pickup, and he thinks, "God, I've made it." Oh, no, he doesn't. The whole thing right in front of him explodes, just totally explodes. And he somehow turned the pickup, went down the road like 45 miles an hour, and you really should be driving about 5 miles an hour. And he gets back down below, and I believe Joe was even there. So Joe has part of this story. And, you know, they do a couple chats about, "What do we do? What, how fast is it gonna be down to where the cars are?" They're thinking like 20 minutes, and in 10 minutes, it's down to where the cars are. So they lose all the cars. They're all exploding. And there was actually a fire truck, and I didn't understand that there's, it's not the red shiny fire trucks. These are like fire trucks that go out. They have a hose that's 750 long, 50 feet long. But to go up that hill, they're not gonna have anything left, you know, for the gallons that that truck is carrying. It's not gonna, it's not gonna make a difference. So that is told to, "No, don't bother coming up." It's, I think it was down below, "Don't bother coming up." And, you know, the thing came down. He really almost died twice that day. But because it was such a whirlwind, there were so many people that should have been there that weren't. He was white when some people saw him, and they all said, "Well, what's going on?" But nobody had time to listen. And he just kind of ate it, and they went on and ended up burning 26,000 acres. But coming back from down the hill, you could see the Millie Fire. And, but you're standing there, okay, so that fire was in '12. It was really, they, the foresters that I'm riding in the pickup with actually commented. I was thinking it, the growth there is so minimal, but they have like these dead trees, even outside of the wilderness line.
Snags.
The snags, which make it more dangerous when that catches on fire again. It makes it even...
Well, that's what happened with Millie. They couldn't bring in people, so they went all the way across McKenzie Road, Highway to backfire.
Yes.
Because they couldn't drop anybody in.
Yeah, they've got all these snags standing, that are like there, that are so dangerous.
Remember, that was one of the discussions in that Blue Mountain Plan, was what's the policy gonna be for snags and salvage and all that stuff?
I know. I was looking at it, and I was thinking, "Oh, my gosh, why..." I'm like such a neat freak. Why doesn't somebody come in, and when the fire's done? Because you look at what's really happened, and environmentally, not that much growth has happened. It's really pretty minimal. I mean, you're looking at the dirt. The dirt isn't, you know, it's like, you would think with all the rain and everything, they'd have more grasses growing up there. I think it was like 5,600 feet. And really, there wasn't that much growing.
And they haven't replanted it?
Uh-uh. No. But there's all these, you know, we all had to wear our hard hats. So he did share it, and he kept, he's only shared this story a couple times. His wife, actually, for the first time ever, was in our group, and shared it with her. And he kept saying, he was kind of nervous because I was there, and I'm like, you know, because he was sharing it with people that were part of his family. So he felt, he felt...
Well, I thought that might be the point of the, why they hit that fire.
And yet someone there said, "You know what? I'm so glad that Nancy, you know, the city councilor Nancy was there. I was there, and then the mayor of Primeville." He says, "I'm so glad that you people were here and understood." And then I'm wondering, sending just, I know it was so short, you don't have any time, but having just one person go on something so critical, maybe both people together would see like the big picture. Like, he goes, "I was just like right behind, standing behind a tree to protect himself from all that heat." And so he's on the phone, standing behind the flip, with the flip phone. You know, the technology really wasn't there where you couldn't really take a picture. The plane overhead did take a spectacular picture that really showed what was gonna be going on. But they never expected that to happen on that day.
Well, it's like the...
Well, thanks for going.
Yeah, it was, and they want you guys to go next year.
It'd be good, yeah. That's interesting, yeah.
But what do we do about those, all those dead trees? And I guess, like, the year before in '11, didn't someone get killed out there in Sisters from a tree falling on them?
Yeah. Yeah, we went to that funeral. It was up at the fairgrounds. That was a big deal.
Yeah. So, you know, he had that going through his head, "Oh, my gosh, I'm gonna be, you know..."
But they were picking that fire probably to show these lessons, that it's outside normal fire season. It's what happens when you're, you know, everybody's not thinking that there might be a fire, how fast it can... I mean, is that what they were kind of picked that fire as opposed to Millie? I mean, there's been 15 big fires.
Well, because it was, it was the story, and, you know, you have all those hikers out there.
Yeah.
And you worry about them. And then the day before...
How do you communicate with them when that comes up, and you don't even know which way they went, and what are they...
What are they doing? So, you know, and the day before up there, the skier had fallen 200 feet off the mountain and got picked up there with the helicopter. So, yeah, it was a pretty, it was, you know, you just never know when you're out there what's really happening, so. Yeah, they had a lot of people from all over the community. But the new person that's replacing John, everybody is thrilled that Holly is going to be the new regional. They think she is going to be an excellent person for everyone to work with. And then they were also explaining to me why Deschutes County has Ed, and how apparently there was a fire quite a while, maybe in '10 or something before Ed got here, that we weren't part of the, what was going on. And so the county thought, "You know what? We need to have our own foresters, so we're a part of the team." Because they were kind of shut out.
Yeah.
No, I was, their communications expert was in my little group. Like, they had groups of 10, and then we had our own leaders. But we were sitting right by where the fire started. So by the, I thought it was a five-mile hike, and it was only a half mile. I was all ready to like, "Oh, my gosh." And that was, it was, you know, what do we do, and what did, what did we learn? And we weren't supposed to be, they didn't want us to be critical of people, of the decisions they made, because when you consider how it was. But, you know, you know, is it possible to send two people? Could you instantly find two people in Sisters? And then I guess the media at that fire was furious. They were all at the ranger's station. And had, they'd been given some bad information by somebody, and there were like, you know, tons and tons of media people there. And immediately wanting to know what's happening. Well, you know, that's something we have to think about, because the media is, you know, with all, with our communication now, they're gonna be on things even faster.
Yeah.
And nobody was there at the ranger's station, so. Yeah, it's bad because of the wind and, you know, the timing.
Right, good. That's good to hear about what it was. Other updates?
Association of Oregon County's director of recruitment, so Mike Elias's position. They're talking about, you know, doing a recruiting, even if he applies and he's, you know, gonna be in the mix, kind of doing the process. I was called by Martha Schreeter today earlier, and she asked if I would be part of the committee. So that's the district chairs. Remember, there's six districts, and I'm District Two chairperson. So I'm gonna be involved with that recruiting process. After July, they'll start it, and however long it takes into August or whatever.
I, it's good to know. I met with, had a chance to talk with one, somebody that's been in Salem a long time, the lobbyist, knows Mike well, and he couldn't give enough praise of how good he was. So that was good to hear. I mean, he was...
He has worked so...
So I'm hoping it...
He is amazing.
Well, that was a choice by the board a month or two ago to say, "Yeah, let's do a recruiting process, encourage him to apply, and then, you know, let the world know," instead of just appointing him, because that was the other path. So that was, that choice was made two months ago.
So who was in charge when they lost all that money?
Mike MacArthur.
Prior chair, Herb Barret.
The prior head?
Yeah, he came in.
That's why he's not there anymore.
Well, I know that, but it seems very quiet. They didn't really want to talk about it when I showed up in November after...
Well, the issue is whether other commissioners that were involved or present and stuff should have been knowing what was going on by the director.
Right.
And that's the, always gonna be the issue.
Yeah, governing body.
Yeah, I mean, what is your role if you're in a volunteer position in a volunteer group? Spending millions of dollars, you're there, but, well, but they're there for four years. I mean, you know, or three years, what, second highest, first, I mean, you're there three years at all these meetings, so. I always maintain, if you don't see the checkbook, you don't really know what's happening. You know, that's the problem. Any other updates?
I talked to Senator Benz this morning at 7:00, who we can call up, but another farmer, except for it's a brewery. And we had a conversation about House Bill 2203, because I got a note that it wasn't looking good, even though that, the report was on Monday that it was fine in my veterans' meeting. It's the veterans' court one. So I called, then I communicated with Michael McLean, and I called the veterans' office and left a message for Mitch, who is now leading to be the executive director of Indian Relations for the state. But anyway, I left a message for him. I did call Keith Crowder, too. So I'm trying to think who else I called. So, yeah, it's like, please, they're supposed to have the funding for that.
Apparently, a new cap and trade came out, maybe last night. Is that, heard that? So whether we want to weigh in on anything, we have a few days.
Oh, and I did call Derek this morning to, because he's the head of the veterans, and he was gonna call Andy about it.
So do we have any other items we want to do on here before we get to executive?
I have one quick thing. I was hoping to get some direction on it. This is related to the Terribahin sewer.
Oh, yes.
So I just, just kind of process going forward. So at Commissioner Adair's request, I followed up with Parker Vernon, who has been lobbying you and testified at the joint planning commission board meeting on assistance for the Terribahin community and looking at a... for the Terrebonne community and looking at a sewer system. So I followed up on some of his notes. They, they've asked the board formally to be a sponsor of a financial assistant from the state to do this study. Well, in, in reading more closely, they have grants available up to twenty thousand, I mean, any above twenties alone. So in, in, it's not as simple as the county being a sponsor. We'd, we'd probably be on the hook for money. Parker's an individual. Terrebonne Water District evidently doesn't wanna be part of this. So we're really the government agency who would be kind of taking the lead. So the question is, would you, we can have a, your options could be scheduling this for a business or for a meeting, a board meeting, likely a Monday meeting. Or I could present you the options. You could make a more formal decision. Then your upside to that is it's all transparent, everybody's there. The downside is if you're not in favor of spending money, then you gotta kind of make that same note in public, you know, that people watching over you.
As we record a meeting.
Beyond just the money, there's also the question of, of staff time. It's gonna take some time, you know, given the lack of any governmental entity or, you know, private entity other than an individual to kind of, you know, follow the study, read the study, analyze the study, present options, you know, and figure out governance, you know, even if it, if there is legs to move it forward. So I just, before I get too far down this road, I just, I wanted to get some feedback from you on how you'd like me to sort of guide this forward.
So this is one of those things that could almost be put into the annual work plan and talk at a bigger level there. You know, this is a task, it's a job, it's a effort. But it's, yeah, I mean, it's kind of bubbling up from some community members in that area. So just by talking about it in a board meeting could formalize it a little bit more. So I understand exactly what you're saying. If the intention is to let them do what they want, but not really spend money on it, maybe we don't even start that process.
You know, it's, it's been interesting being part of the Terrebonne Refinement Plan Committee. And trying to see how a community feels about something and, and look at the alternatives that the ODOT has come up with there and then the back and forth. And so I had left the last meeting, I think I reported, thinking it seemed like there's a lot of community support for this new deal. Then I promptly got several emails from people that were just thought it was awful. So I guess what I'm kind of wondering is whether, I understand there's this, what's his name again? Parker, Vernon, his dad is Guy. I understand they have a specific enthusiasm for this related to their own situation. But I, I'd really like to hear that ten other people in the community are, think it's worthwhile and realistic and makes an economical before. And so I, which kind of brings me around, should we, maybe we should figure out some way to do outreach to the community of, I mean, I've had people tell me that it made no sense in, in Terrebonne, that live in Terrebonne. Ones was related to the water, was on the water board, I think. And so I don't know whether this is a, and I have never looked at the earlier study, but if there's clear problems. It's like if somebody had come to me in the city of Ben and said, boy, we should put sewer in my neighborhood where I live. I would have asked the questions, which I ended up asking, why are you gonna spend that kind of money when we've all got septic systems and they work? And you could replace them four, three or four times per house for the cost of doing the sewer. I would have put my money in the sewer to new places for, I mean, I would have, from the get-go, I would have tried to not go in that direction. And so I'm wondering if there's really a, do people, and so, and everybody in my neighborhood felt that way. I mean, it was just the city imposing it basically. I bet it was eighty percent of people didn't wanna do that. So I, I feel like before we go down this thing as the financier for a project, we oughta see if there's really, one, realistic and two, widely supported. Maybe we could have a meeting up there and have a, you know, a, but you know, I thought about it before, having board meetings, another place in the county. And, you know, some evening just to hear about issues, but that would be the kind of thing that would be interesting to hear. You know, before you move in with a, you know, spending the county money.
You'd said the businesses were supporting it and it's.
How many of them told you that though?
No, I know, that's what I mean. We need to see names and numbers and it's like the woman who, I told you, the woman who works at Ray's in Sisters, lives in Terrebonne. She goes, oh my gosh, yeah, we definitely need that. So, but you know, that's one person, but you know, somebody I know.
And we, we saw a little bit in South County too. And what I hear from Todd is that you're gonna get a mixed bag. You're gonna get people who absolutely want it because they got a system that's getting to the end of its life. And they don't have that reserve area to put in the new system. They're looking at big money. You get people who own property who can't, don't have enough to side a system. They'd love to see sewer, they develop undeveloped properties, real small lots there. That'd be potentially a good thing for affordable housing. But then you got a whole lot of people like at South County who've invested in the new septic system. They're, they're golden. You know, they don't need anything for, for, you know, some time. So they have no incentive to wanna hook up, pay to hook up to a brand new.
And see, that's, to me, that's what southeast, I mean, they literally told us it was sixty thousand a house to do that sewer system. Well, that's four new, brand new septic systems, maybe with ATT and two of them. I mean, it's just crazy money to me to, I mean, to spend when you have limited resource. But that doesn't mean there weren't people in the neighborhood that thought, like you said, they had a failing system. But realistically, it'd be better we all chip in for their system than it is to build a whole sewer. Well, that's good to hear. So Todd's kind of knows the territory a little bit.
Oh, yeah. He's, he's the guy. So he's, he's worked with all the people whose systems have failed and need to be replaced. He's consulted the people who are getting there. And he's worked with, and BEQ is involved also because they're in charge of all the commercial systems and all the businesses. Some of whom are really in a tough spot because, you know, they've got a high volume system. BEQ permits those and not much options for.
See, that would be interesting to me is what's kind of the lay, layout of septic, you know, big systems, small systems, kind of a mapping. I was, I drove out to Smith Rock when I was up there at the last Terrebonne meeting, cause I, we've been talking about the roads there and parking and everything. I was thinking about that little mobile home park there that sits right next to the park. It's like they must have some kind of community sewer system. I was thinking, you know, what, what's, and those look like they're pretty older mobile homes by.
Is that the one that Vernon's own?
No, this one's out by Smith Park, Smith Rock. Theirs is right there in town, I think. I just wonder what's kind of the lay of, what's the underground of Terrebonne currently look like and maybe Todd would know that, but.
Well, I, I, I mean, I'd be up for a community meeting and just to lay out facts as we know them, you know, and not even putting direction to it. Because, yeah, I mean, it is, it can be expensive, but I do like the idea of, you know, new, next generation systems, whatever things could be. Also, you know, we've, state got a rule about just one, one septic system per lot. But now there's, is there a world out there that we could talk about or envision that could be different?
Yeah, yeah. And I agree with that. I, I think.
But then, if we ask those questions and answer them, especially in a very public setting, you know, the rules are such that you can't go down this path, this path or this path, you know, because there's a lot of knowledge that needs to be imparted to the general citizens to understand what it really means.
I wonder if Todd knows it well enough that we had, you know, just met with him individually to get our own questions answered, then we came back to a work session to. With each of us or, no, with, with us. So we talked to him about what we're each individually. I mean, that might be a way. And then we talked collectively at a work session.
No, I feel like I should go down and go shopping in Terrebonne. I talk to people.
Well, that's, yeah, that's a great way to do it.
I mean, you know, that one, I can just like, they go, they know that I really want to know. And, and then I can say, hey, if you have any friends that have opinions, you know, have them get ahold of me. But I keep thinking that that's what I should do. You know, it's always good to talk to people.
Yeah, it's kind of random. I mean.
So I had those area maps created, which is the footprint of the water district. And there's a small group of houses on a community system already and there's the manufactured home park and commercial there. So there's already a couple layers in there. I sent them to the water district director guy. We could have Tim Berg print them again. I had two of them. I figured the value wasn't sitting on my desk, so I made sure to get them to him. But it's just an area map. It wasn't anything.
It looks like the weather forecast is gonna come in.
Yeah. Possible thunderstorms.
Okay, well, anything else, Tom? I guess your direction is, I guess I'd like to know a little more if we have another work session, but I could probably do it individually.
I'll ask, I'll, I'll work with Todd to do like a fact sheet, some background on what's their now age. And, and then get it to each of you and then offer it individually if that's what you'd like.
Yeah. Hey, that sounds good.
Commissioner, one quick thing. KTPZ called and they'd like to do an on, on-camera interview with somebody about county, upcoming county college. It's related to the press release that, that just went out. Does one of the commissioners?
You're in charge.
Oh, yes.
Remember, you volunteered.
I didn't volunteer. I was.
You were volunteered by us because, well, you're the most familiar with, of the three of us. We're just there as speakers. You've lived it.
I've lived it.
Okay, I'll forward you the contact information.
Thank you.
That's good, yeah. Dave, anything else, Dave?
Yes, sir.
Good. Well, adjourned for now. We're gonna reconvene, I guess, at four fifteen for executive session. Okay? Thanks.